The council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. We have correspondence from Jean Lynch regarding parking near crosswalks on Greenwood Road as part of our public input. So we can take that item first and then open it up for other public input. Jean, did you want to make a statement about your letter?
Would you like me to read the letter or just make a statement?
I believe we've all read it except for the, the audience.
Okay, so basically my letter is to the council. It's regarding crosswalks on Greenwood. And the incident was that I was discussing was my husband and myself walking on Greenwood Avenue and going to cross the road and we stopped at the crosswalk by the school. And a lady was approaching, so we kind of sit back and as we all know pedestrians have the right of way on crosswalks. So she came to an abrupt halt. She did not realize that we were there. So my husband, who was a professional truck driver for years, he's retired now and volunteer firefighter in the city of Blue Lake for 25 years, noticed that the reason that she didn't see us at the crosswalk was a vehicle was parked and was blocking the view of the crosswalk area that pedestrians stopped to go across. And this is the one with the light fixture that you compress. And this is the one the kids use to go back and forth to school. So my question for the council is how many feet can a car park close to a crosswalk? I know we have. And if I, and that's going to be the discussion for the public input. And thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jean. It's, it's a good question. I have noticed the school bus parks awfully close to the crosswalk too, and I was a little concerned about that. I don't know of any laws about that. Do you, Mandy, know the law about cars being parked close to crosswalks?
I don't, but I do know that it's being addressed under our truck route survey and analysis. It's one of the issues that we've been looking at to address. And right now, the reason why the bus is parked in a different location is due to the COVID restrictions for the drop offs of the kids. And so they've had to make some adjustments in order to meet some of the drop off requirements. It's been a little bit, it's, it's been working out okay because they've had a crossing guard. So they do have someone that's taking the kids to and from, and when there's drop offs and pickups, they have someone that's managing traffic. But it's hopefully not a long term issue, but it's kind of a temporary solution until they can kind of figure out kind of what the new normal looks like or we get through the end of the school year. But the crosswalks are being evaluated via the truck route survey.
One more thing. Bethany, Tess, Sally, I never get that right. A neighbor across the street who is right by the crosswalk has a vehicle. And if I look in the morning, the bus is blocking her view as far as pulling out. And she's right there by the crosswalk and then the bus is also blocking the view. And I wanted to mention that she also has a concern about the crosswalk.
Yes, thank you, Jean. I saw that in, in your letter and I appreciate that. I think maybe we can connect with the school maybe to see what kind of changes they can make as far as where the bus is. And I know it's a problem because it's always been a problem with parents picking up students that gets very, very busy in the mornings and in the afternoons when the kids are being picked up. And I think they're all getting picked up about the same time now too, which makes it a little worse even. It's not staggered like it used to be. So hopefully some of these problems won't be as bad, but I, I do appreciate your concern, Jean. And I, I've been concerned about people pulling out of, in their cars and when there's no visibility. That's been a concern too, but pedestrians is also a concern. So we are doing a truck route survey. Your house is of course on the truck route, as you know, so that's always been something that's been foremost on, on our minds, I know, for many, many years. Mandy, did you have, did you get ahold of the superintendent at all, Mandy, or did you talk to anybody about it?
We work together on developing the drop off and pickup protocol. Like I said, we, they're very limited on what their options are at this point. They're having to drop off kids down at the gymnasium because they can't have people walk in, they can't have parking. So it's, it's definitely not the ideal situation, but it, right now at this moment with the COVID protocols that they have to put in place is this is kind of the framework that they have to work within. So like I said, they are using a crossing guard that comes out and directs traffic in order to make sure that people can cross safely. But I do believe that we probably should just end up taking away that parking spot in front of the crosswalk, probably the one that Bethany parks at, probably should go away, it should be a red curb.
Yeah, that would, that would probably solve a lot of problems. That's a good idea. Okay. Jean, did you have any other questions or concerns you wanted to bring up?
No, thank you for looking at that item.
Okay, thank you for your input. Is there any other public comment and on anything that is not on the agenda this evening?
Hi, this is Linda Miller. I, I did submit a letter that I wanted to present, but it is on, that John Friedenbach is giving a presentation on this issue. So may I speak about that?
We would prefer that agenda items be discussed at the time of the agenda, just to keep things clean. You understand?
Okay, yeah, it was probably a little bit different than, you know, to write a letter because I wanted the council to write a letter, but I'll speak later if that fits in then.
Okay, good, thank you, Linda. Thank you. Is there any other public input from anyone that is not wanting to speak on an agenda item?
I have a point about your minutes of February 23rd, which I feel is not specifically part of your agenda item five today.
Well, we will be getting to that, sir, on item seven B, we will be discussing the minutes. So we can pull them at that time and discuss them if you can bear with us.
As you please.
Thank you. All right, seeing as there's no other public.
Adeline?
Oh, yes.
There's several people have their hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, good. Okay, remember that this is a non-agenda item.
For us, this is Kat Nagier.
Juliana, can you hear us?
Adeline, yes, this is Juliana Christie. I just wanted to comment on a suggestion for the council to take advantage of these Zoom meetings in the fashion that they can be recorded and then posted later. I think that would be really beneficial to the community to provide that access to these meetings after they happen. It would save a lot with meeting minutes and everything else that's going on currently. I use that for a lot of other programs. It works really efficiently. It's very easy. And to jump back to what Jean was talking about with the crosswalks, I have two kids that are attending Blue Lake Elementary. I have a big truck. I have to transit there every day and I feel like they've done a really good job with the crosswalking. They've been very attentive. I feel really safe for all the students, for my students. And I just want to kind of put that little input in as well. I think they're doing the best that they can with the protocol given. And with my experience so far transiting to the school, I feel like it's been a really nice, safe environment. Thank you all, that's it.
Thank you, Juliana, thank you. Mandy, do you have the capability to record our Zoom meetings?
Yeah, this is being recorded.
Okay.
We've just run into some capacity issues in the past and we're trying to figure out the best way to download these and archive them. They're, they're coming out as like extremely large files, but we don't really have the internal capacity to archive. And I was just talking with Summer about this today, like the best way to, to manage that. So I don't know if that's, it used to be like burn a CD. We don't do that stuff anymore. So I'm not technologically advanced enough to figure out, but we are, this one is, it's supposed to be recording, so hopefully, hopefully that happens.
Yeah. And then we just have to figure out how people can access it once it's recorded. Elaine?
Yeah, and that's something that Access Humboldt can help with and they post things on archive.org, which is like a free, you know, public access online archiving system. And so I know that's where a lot of other city council and board of supervisors meetings end up. So then we could just link to it from our website and not pay the server fees on our website. So it's an option.
Thank you. Okay, there was another group that wished to speak during public meeting time, was that correct?
Yeah, Kat Nagier.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, okay. So I'm just kind of piggybacking on the issue of Greenwood and the crosswalk. And I just kind of wanted to bring to your attention that while we've been, the truck survey has been underway for quite some time and I know it is kind of a complex issue. At the same time, there's this thing called the 331 rule that we go by in safety. And for 300 near misses, you get 30 accidents that happened with no injury. And then you get one that actually results in injury or death. And the reason I bring up the 33, the 331 rule is that we're well over our 300 incidents over and over again on Greenwood and Railroad with speeding and close calls and accidents. And we have many instances of 30 close calls. And I'm afraid that we, we haven't really done an appropriate reset to be able to address that one injury or loss of life. What I'm looking at with the truck survey route as you're considering the information you've gathered from it, is one of the items that wasn't contained in it, and I think could be actually an effective solution, an inexpensive solution, and not necessarily a permanent solution, would be, and Mandy knows what I'm going to say, a stop sign at Greenwood and Railroad. Now, that wasn't part of the, the survey and I feel like it's an important option to be considered. We have difficulty here at the crosswalk. We hear that expressed by people here in our crosswalk that's at Greenwood and Railroad. And it does seem odd to have a crosswalk without a stop sign there. And what I feel it could do, not just to benefit where my house is, but also for those along the route of Railroad in Greenwood, is it breaks that momentum. Those folks come wheeling through the corner, you know, one going in one direction or the other. And so by the time they hit the, they begin to hit Greenwood, they're already doing 20 miles an hour and the sign is flashing at them and they don't slow down. So I would ask, and I know it, it doesn't have to be right this moment, but according to the 331 rule, we're running out of opportunities to address this. And I'm afraid as, as we wait for the much more complicated progress, project that the truck route would be, is that let's consider a stop sign there, please. Thank you so much for your time and for being on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your input, Kat. That's an interesting idea. Yeah, okay. When you have a stop sign issue, you have to go through a study with the engineer. I mean, it's not impossible, but there is a process to it when you're talking about changing some signage when it comes to streets and roads. Okay, is there any other public input at this time? Meg Dofsky?
Okay, go ahead, Meg. Okay, so again, piggybacking on this issue, as someone with some mobility issues, just anything that, what I have heard is that if you have a, a larger vehicle or are a speedier person than maybe, some people are, you have an advantage over people. And so from an ADA perspective, rather than, you know, run, run all ladies over, I definitely suggest that you look into whatever is necessary for the, for the stop sign or some other thing. And I would like to then suggest one of the local agencies who are just terrific, Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities, they have just a lot of knowledge and a lot of know-how on how to do, how to do these kinds of surveys and how to, and make it effective so that we aren't waiting for tragedy or injury, which would cost the city probably a lot more than being proactive for those kinds of things. So that was all my suggestion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Meg. Thanks for, thank you for zooming in. All right, good suggestions. Any other public comment on an item that's not on the agenda?
You have Alicia Russo.
Okay, and Mickey. Okay. Alicia Russo. Hi, Alicia.
Hey, I sent a letter in this afternoon and I was just wanting to make sure that the council received it.
That'll be the second of those public comments.
And then secondly, I was wondering if the 2021 council minutes can be added to the city website? Sorry, I have my six month old here. I was trying to find the minutes for the last month's meeting and wasn't able to. I noticed only 2020s were on the website unless I'm having some technical difficulty myself, but I was curious if they're on there. If not, can they be added?
There was no meeting in January. The meeting in January was canceled due to a power outage. So there were two meetings in February and those are being addressed tonight.
They'll be added on the website, the minutes will?
If ones are approved tonight.
Oh, okay, got it, thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Alicia. Bye, baby. Mickey has her hand up.
Hi, thank you guys for this opportunity. And when we're discussing kind of pedestrian safety in Blue Lake, we live on I Street. And I came to a city council meeting over a year ago just to bring up our concerns about, there are several times a day during the day and night that people are speeding, like going twice the speed limit down I Street. And it's very concerning. There's been animals that have been killed. I've seen children almost hit. And so I just want to deeply encourage some thought in regards to the safety on I Street and that it's heavily utilized with no stop signs, no speed bumps, nothing.
Didn't we talk about, Mandy, didn't we talk about putting a stop sign along I Street? But that never happened, did it?
Yeah, so we are right now in the process of having the engineer evaluate I Street to see what kind of traffic improvements we can make. I Street is another really extremely wide straight stretch that is a big concern. And so Mike is formulating a few recommendations right now. We're kind of extrapolating some of the data from the Greenwood Railroad Hatchery assessment and looking at what might be some options to make improvements to I Street. Probably the most immediate improvement that can be made is a four-way stop at a couple locations. So we are evaluating that and getting the engineer's recommendation, which is required in order to justify installation of stop signs.
We so appreciate you guys taking this on and kind of looking at trying to get deeper.
It's, it's, it's a really of high concern. We have the top lot up there, you know, there's a lot of residents, it's, you know, extremely dense. So we, we definitely recognize that it's got some major safety concerns. So I, I always apologize for government, you know, taking so long. We just have a lot of process, unfortunately. It'd be nice if we could just go stick the stop signs in, but unfortunately, we can be challenged on multiple levels in the event of even a traffic stop or if there were to be an accident, there's some liability issues that are associated. So it's taking us a little while. We're also looking at Hartman, that's another one that has some extreme issues that's being evaluated. So we, we have valid reasons for implementing safety protocol along those roadways.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Okay, thank you, Mickey. I see Heather has her hand up. Heather, are you ready to give public input?
Yes, hey, good evening, everybody. Just also speaking on traffic concerns, especially with children. I used to live on I Street and now I actually live along the boulevard and even have a bird's eye view of Greenwood. And so I really did appreciate the truck route survey. I thought that was really well put together, great questions, really allowed for the individual to give their input. So I'm just kind of wondering what the next step you guys are going to be taking with that survey and creating, you know, real time? Or just addressing the concerns of the people of Blue Lake and what they filled out with the survey, kind of like communicating to us the results of that and how the city will move forward with addressing those concerns. And as well as just also, I'd like to, again, kind of highlight the crime, the continuous crime that just keeps happening in our town. And if there's any more action, that's kind of being looked into to try to help prevent the ongoing crime.
Thank you, Heather. Two good, two good points. To your first point, of course, the bad news is that Blue Lake Boulevard is not in the city of Blue Lake. You know, the city actually ends at the edge of your property, probably depending on where you are on Blue Lake Boulevard. But it is in our sphere of influence, so we're very concerned about it as well as other streets within our city. And we'll take that, you know, into consideration. But it is a county road, so some of our purview does not extend to that area, unfortunately. And I knew that because I lived on the city side of Blue Lake Boulevard for 13 years. Concerning your issue with the crime, I, I'm very concerned about that as well. This petty crime, people breaking into trucks or just, I think going around just trying handles, seeing if it's open and then taking whatever they want. My, my own family has been affected by it and, and it's really, it's really a serious thing. I, I hope to talk to the sheriff about this when we renew his contract. I know Mandy's on top of it as well. You know, it's, it's a sad state of affairs when you think, when I first moved to Blue Lake and we didn't even lock our door, you know? And now, and now it's locked the door, make sure there's nothing of value. I mean, they're taking, they're taking receipts from tires out of cars. I mean, things that I, I just don't even know what value they have in them. There's nothing there that would be of value. So it's, it's very concerning and just be vigilant, no matter how small it is, tell the sheriff about it, make a report. That's what I always tell people on, on, on our Facebook site, you know, that, that just, no matter how small it is, make a report of it. That's, that's the important thing. Mandy, did you want to add anything else about that?
Yeah, so we're, we finalized all of the data collection for the truck route survey and the engineers have come up with a couple of options that will be presented to the community and the council, probably, probably at next month's meeting, I would assume. There's still some issues to work through. Definitely one of the main issues is Greenwood and trying to accommodate probably a bicycle lane or wider sidewalks, just trying to figure out what the best option is for that because we, we have some limitations on Greenwood, but we also have a lot of opportunities. So they're still kind of wrestling with a few concepts on Greenwood for presentation, but I think we're pretty close to having something that'll be ready to present based upon comments and analysis and, and data collection.
Okay, great. I appreciate you guys doing that and giving me an update.
And then also on the, you know, the, the ongoing petty crimes, we are working with our Public Safety Commission. The council approved a community surveillance program that they're actively working on. And that's a small grant program to get community surveillance cameras in strategic locations to help dissuade crime and, and possibly help to catch people and, and hopefully prosecute if possible. They're also working on a, an observe and report program that would work with community members who are interested in doing neighborhood walking, neighborhood patrols, and just making more of a presence, kind of to deter some of this. A lot of this is crimes of opportunity that we're seeing. So we're looking at other flexible opportunities and lower cost solutions to kind of help with that. And we think increased presence, you know, lighting, cameras, you know, making sure your doors are locked will help to alleviate some of this.
Okay. And lastly, speaking of the Blue Lake Community Page, for those of us who aren't on social media, how can we, besides attending our council meetings, how can we also obtain this information?
So we do have a city website.
Okay.
And I, we try and post all the agendas, minutes. I try and post, you know, if there's reports, important information that we can get up there, that's an option. And you can always come into City Hall, you can email me, you can call me. I'm pretty much always in town, so, and I'm more than happy to sit down and talk with you, give you an update. We can Zoom conference call, meet outside. I'm pretty available and pretty flexible and I'm happy to do that.
All right, beautiful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Heather. Okay, is there any other public comment? I don't see any other hands.
I don't see any others, no.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay.
Lynn has her hand.
Oh, oh, sorry, Lynn, hi.
Hi, just quickly, I saw a front page story in the Time Standard that the city of Blue Lake has received federal stimulus money or will receive federal stimulus money. And I forgot, it was about $237,000 maybe?
That's what I saw, yeah.
Yeah.
$240,000. About $240,000, that's pretty exciting.
Even better. And I saw that Eureka, the cities of Eureka and Arcade have been discussing their priorities for that money. And I didn't know if the council was going to be talking about that at some point. I didn't see it on the agenda. So I just wanted to bring that up and maybe it'll be, it'll be on a future agenda or how would, how would that be handled?
So we're waiting on some of the final guidelines for that funding. They haven't been fully, fully issued. So we're looking at having the best information possible for the council to, to make some decisions about opportunities to utilize those resources. It can be used for revenue replacement, which will be important to the community because we, you know, we didn't have any revenue coming in from our perks program last year, which is a big impact. So the funding can be used to augment that revenue loss, but there could be also some strategic opportunities to leverage those resources or put those resources to use in a way that would benefit the community on a broader scale. So right now, the, the guidelines are a little bit undefined, but we're hoping to have some final guidelines here soon for consideration.
Really good news, thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Thanks for bringing that up. Okay, have I missed anyone else? I don't see any hands. Speak up. Okay, everything else will be on the agenda items. So we're moving on then to agenda item four, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Presentation. The Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District Presentation will be held by General Manager of the Humboldt Bay Water District. He'll provide an overview of the status of the former McNamara and Peep Mill Site, including contamination issues and potential impacts to the Mad River and the HBMWD Rainy Wells. And I'm assuming that our speaker is And I'm assuming that our speaker is here. Mandy, did you want to give an overview first?
Yeah, let me, let me find John.
I'm here.
Oh, hi, John.
There he is. Hi, John. Okay.
So this is John Friedenbach, and he is the General Manager of Humboldt Bay. And he is going to provide the council and the community kind of an overview of the status. Of the former mill site and also possible implications. And hopefully provide a bit of guidance on some steps that the council could take. To either present a position on the issue? Or provide assistance to the municipal water district and support of their position. So I think John probably has the most information. I did provide in your packets several correspondence to kind of bring you up to date on the status. And so I think John probably can take over and provide more detail.
Okay. Thanks for having me tonight. This really came about by a report that was given by one of our directors. At the February REDAC meeting. And I know that your city council's a REDAC member. So maybe your representative heard this discussion at REDAC. And the request was made to our director. How could REDAC and REDAC members support the Water District? In trying to get the McNamara and Peep Mill Site cleaned up? And the suggestion was made to send letters in to DTSC. And we'll come back to that at the end, but that just gives you a context for why this is coming before you tonight. So I'm going to share my screen and give you a crash course on McNamara and Peep. It looks.
And also, just for the information, because of the abbreviation, DTSC stands for Department of Toxic Substances Control. Which until tonight, I didn't even know we had, so that's always interesting.
What does REDAC?
Redwood.
Regional Economic Development.
Yeah.
Corporation of.
Yeah.
It's Redwood Region Economic Development Commission.
Oh, commission.
Commission, okay.
Letters that were written to the water, like the potential of the water contamination?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm trying to share my screen. It says host has disabled. Can you make me a co-host?
I think I just shared my.
Yeah.
I think I shared my screen.
So can you, can you make me a co-host?
Yeah, let me.
Okay, let's try this again. Here we go. Okay, let's see. What you get? Okay, what's showing up on your screen? Is it a assessor's parcel map? Is that what's showing up?
Yes.
Okay. And how about now? Do you see an outline?
Yes.
Okay, so here's your crash, crash course. McNamara and Peep is a former mill site in the Glendale area. It's on Glendale Boulevard. It's approximately 26 acres. And this map here is from the Humboldt County Web GIS. So anybody can go on and, and take a look. But basically, it's in the area where Royal Gold is operating. And also to the east over in this area. I don't know if you can see my cursor moving around. And then also, so that's on the north side of Glendale, on the same side as the market and the bowling alley. And then on the south side of Glendale, there were a couple of parcels over there. That were also the McNamara and Peep Mill Sites. So it's a pretty large area, mill operation. And the activity that was conducted on those properties that caused the contamination? Was they used PCP, which is a wood preservative back in the seventies? And in the early eighties. And they had some dip tanks on a couple of locations on the property. And, and the chemical spilled out of the tanks and got into the soil and contaminated. Both the soil and groundwater in that area. So that's, as I said, a crash course, but it gives you the basics.
Chocolate is in the freezer in the bar.
So.
Really quick, John, can I interrupt? If, for members of the public, if you're not speaking, could you please mute yourself? Thank you.
Thank you. I was, I was gonna go look for the chocolate in the freezer. In, so in terms of history and, and sort of chronology. Our district became aware of contamination at this site in the mid 1980s. Long before I, I got here. But our general managers over those decades have been watching this. And, and our board has been informed and, and so on. So it's not a new issue. This issue's been around for a long time. It's getting more public attention and awareness. And I'll, I'll get into that as we progress. But to give you some other key dates. In 1998, DTSC implemented a remedial action plan. And they thought that was going to address the contamination. And during the early 2000s, they monitored the site to see how effective the remedial action plan was. And in 2008, DTSC issued what's called an imminent and substantial endangerment determination. And that's basically. It sounds pretty drastic, and it, and it is. I don't want to, you know, belittle that. But it basically is their enforcement action that allows them to take over remediation on the site. So the, the former property owners filed for bankruptcy. And when you have a contaminated site and no responsible party as the owner of the site. If they don't have the financial wherewithal to pay for the remediation, then the state steps in. If it's a state contaminated site, which this one is. Then the Department of Toxics and Substance Control, which is a state agency, takes over remediation and cleanup. So that's how DTSC got involved in this site. In 2018, so just three years ago, DTSC declared that the remedial action plan had failed. And when that notice was released, our district became extremely concerned. And started putting pressure on DTSC to clean up the site and clean it up quickly. So that's what I think has precipitated the public awareness that has been heightened over the last couple of years. We've had quite a bit of correspondence with DTSC. Some of those letters are in your, your council packet. And so you can look in there for the details. But basically, we're concerned about dioxin and PCP. Those two chemicals are toxic. They're carcinogens, and we are not equipped currently to filter those chemicals out of the drinking water. So that's why we're concerned with cleaning up the site and cleaning it up quickly. If you look at Google Earth Map, you can see this site is about, depending on where you start. But it's about a half a mile to the river. And then once you get to the river, our closest rainy well is about a mile downstream. So it's got some ways for the contaminants to travel. They don't typically migrate quickly in groundwater. But, you know, the potential exists. And, and so that's why we want to get the site cleaned up before it becomes a drastic issue for us. And so that, we started that in January of 2019. In September of this last year, we had a big meeting with DTSC. And, and they informed us that their budget for this site, which was to include testing and remediation. Was only $30,000. And if you've had to deal with contamination and cleanup, you'll know that $30,000 doesn't get you very far in today's world. So that, basically, they were, they were budgeting for one sample event. And some consultant work and not much in the way of remediation. So being informed with that, our district took the initiative. And we, in February of this year, wrote two letters, one to Assemblyman Wood and one to Senator McGuire. Requesting that the state find additional budget money. And we suggested the figure of $200,000 to dedicate to the cleanup of this site. In response to those letters, McGuire and Woods, Eureka local staff. Set up a meeting between the Water District, their respective offices and DTSC. To educate the Assemblyman and Senator about the issue. And then try to find out what, you know, DTSC could do. And so we appreciate the local staff of, of both of those individuals in, in setting that up. We had that meeting over a week ago. It was very informative. I felt very productive. One of the information that came out of that meeting was the current budget for this site. Is now $210,000 by DTSC. They've just completed a current round of both groundwater and surface water sampling. They hadn't done surface water sampling previously. And they're planning to use the results from those two sample events to create a, what's called a benchtop. Remediation study. So they basically go to the laboratory. And based on the, the level of contaminants, try to design a cost-effective remediation plan. That'll take care of the contamination. And if that proves effective, then they implement that out into the field. So we've had some pretty good progress just in the last six months. And that basically takes us down to current. And I had mentioned at the beginning, there was a discussion at REDAC. And you can see on the screen, there was a sample letter that was distributed to our seven municipal water customers. This city of Blue Lake being one of those that you could choose to send in to DTSC. Communicating your support for cleanup of the site, if you so choose. The, so far, City of Eureka, City of Arcade, Humboldt Community Service District, REDAC. And at 7:30 tonight, Fieldbrook Glendale CSD is considering sending in a letter like this. And I know that McKinleville is going to consider it at their April meeting. So just about all seven of our municipal customers will have considered sending in a letter of support. And this is a copy of REDAC's letter, so you can see, you know, once it's filled out. And so with that. The last item on this little summary is a website. It's called EnviroStore. And if you go to that website, that's a DTSC website. And you can type in McNamara. There are several McNamara sites, the McNamara and Peep Mills were throughout the Humboldt, Del Norte County. Couple different mills. But if you look at the one at 1619 Glendale, you can see all of the history that DTSC has on the site. You can see all of the correspondence that our district has sent in over the, over the years. You can see test results, you can see remedial action plans. There's just a, a ton of information there if you have the time and, and interest for people to go look and, and get more technical information. So with that, I will be available for questions.
Thank you, John. That was very informative. This is listed as a no action item on our agenda, but I really would like the action of us. Supporting your efforts on the cleanup and that we send a letter also from the city of Blue Lake, supporting the cleanup efforts. You said that the property was up, put, was, the, the property owners declared bankruptcy? So who actually owns the property right now?
Well, the, the original 26 acres have been subdivided. And let me just go back to this map. You'd have to look up the individual property owners for each APN to see who owns which site. But there are several different owners. And what's come up, in addition to, you know, just dealing with DTSC. Is there have been some applications through the Building Department, Humboldt County Building Department, because it's in the county. For new construction activities. And that raises a concern by our district. When you have construction activities on a contaminated site, it has the potential to. Aggravate the, the contamination. And so it, it can enhance the, the rate of spread of the contaminant. And it can also create new pathways for the contamination to migrate. So if you're digging down into the soil and you're constructing footings for buildings? Or you're digging new sewer lines or water lines or things like that, that are subterranean. You can get down into the contact level of groundwater. And create a preferred path of migration. So those are, have been concerns by district for some of the development that's happening out there. And, and another reason why we want to have DTSC clean up the site. So that, you know, people can develop out there and not have the contamination to worry about.
Yeah, because I noticed on your map here, On Point Farms was a PCP dip tank building and then Emerald Family Farms. I mean, if these people are trying to have farms on the land and it's contaminated, then the produce is not going to be edible. I mean.
I, I think these are above-ground cannabis farms.
Oh, okay. All right, any questions from council?
Yeah, a quick question for you, John. We have, Neil actually brought this to our REDAC board. And it was, it was, my understanding is that all of the jurisdictions will be sending out a letter. Everybody was supportive of that and very concerned, considering the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District supplies water to, you'll have to correct me on this. But over 80,000 residents in the county. Am I close?
You're, you're very close. Good job.
And so my concern is what constitutes cleanup? And from my understanding of other, maybe even like brown sites or superfund sites. That $210,000 will barely touch it. So what, what are, what's the proposal for cleaning up the site? What does that?
Right, so that's the $64 million question. But DTSC told us this last week in our joint meeting was, and I asked this question specifically. I said, would the 210,000 pay for the benchtop study? To determine how you're going to proceed with contamination cleanup? And they assured us that it would pay for the study. So once the study is complete, then they will have a methodology for site cleanup. then they will have a methodology for site cleanup. And once that's determined, the next step would be, okay, what's it going to cost to do this onsite? How long do we have to do it? That's another cost factor. And to what level are we going to clean up the contaminants? So all of those decisions are yet to be made. And they will determine, you know, the cost of the remediation and how long it's going to take. I can assure you that our district is going to be, you know, adamant about cleaning it up as quickly as possible and continuing to have adequate funding for this site.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. It kind of relates to what Summer was saying. I'm just wondering if there are things that, what can the public do to help? Or I don't know if there's anything that the people, people who are not, you know, in, yeah, just the general public, because it affects so many of us.
Yeah. So we're starting to get several of those type of phone calls. And my response has been to everyone as an individual, what you can do is send a personal letter or an email to our elected representatives, specifically Assemblyman Wood and Senator McGuire. And say that your, you know, support cleaning up the the former McNamara and Peep Mill site, you'd like to see continual dedicated funding to that site to have it cleaned up as quickly as possible. And if you want to look at some sample letters, you can go on our website. And in our March Board Packet, you can see some sample letters that we sent.
Thank you for that question. That was a good one, Olivia. So that's something we can do individually. And then as a council, I think we should generate a letter as well. And I'd be more than willing to sign that, Mandy, to lend our voice to this effort. Are there any other questions from council? I was going to open it up to the audience. Yes, Elaine.
Um, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering about the $210,000 in the timeline for completing that study. Do you have any sense of whether it's this fiscal year? Or how long it might take?
I got the sense that it would be complete by the end of the calendar year.
Okay, definitely just keep us keep us in the loop. I think it sounds like all the jurisdictions are are, you know, on the same page. And so I think that can be really powerful. So please just keep us updated and we will stay stay on it for sure together. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, when you when you monitor the water coming out, can you see levels of PCP? Would that show up right away for you?
It only shows up if you test for it. And unfortunately, the state doesn't require us to test for that. So that's an internal discussion we're having right now is do we start testing for dioxin and PCP? It's expensive to test for it. And because it it appears from prior testing by DTSC that it hasn't actually migrated to Hall Creek yet. So we think that we have some time, but we I can, you know, give you 100% assurance of that.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. Chris or anyone else from the council? Is there anyone in Olivia?
Do you know about how much time and how like, is this something that people should be very concerned about?
No, I wouldn't be alarmed or extremely concerned. I've I've heard of some people going out and buying bottled water. We're nowhere near that need at this point. Your tap water is fine to drink. So as I said, we're having an internal discussion to determine whether we, you know, want to take some samples. If we do that, we'll certainly alert the public and and let them know either way, what the test results are. But as I said, the the sampling that DTSC has done. And I should show you one other site. This is the property that's on the south side of Glendale. There it's a privately owned property. And there the current owners are voluntarily going to sample their property for PCP and dioxin. So we're going to have some more recent samples here in the next few months that'll tell us what level of contamination is migrating towards Hall Creek. And we can compare that to previous test results that DTSC has done. And that's how you tell the rate of migration as the contaminants pass through the groundwater.
Because from what I understand, you're, whoops, I muted. Oh, yeah, I'm mute. Yeah, I'm okay. So from what I understand, you tap water really low under the Mad River. I mean, it's it's quite a depth, isn't it, from from the top of the Mad?
Right. So our groundwater aquifer that our rainy collectors take water from is anywhere from 60 to 90 feet below surface level. And our scientific experts that have been, we've hired to watch this issue for us have said it's a low risk at the current moment that we would have any contamination at those levels of of water from this site. So, you know, again, that's without actual test results. But, you know, we'll probably have some test results here in the near future.
Thank you. Other questions from council? Anything from audience? Mandy, do you see anything from the audience that is on this issue? I see Mark Courtright.
Yeah, hi, excuse me. This is Linda Miller. Actually, it's my husband's computer. I couldn't figure out how to change the name. And I do apologize for not raising my hand in the before. But I was wondering, John, if you wouldn't mind pointing out exactly where Hall Creek is for everyone on this map, just so.
Yeah. So on the the map that's showing Hall Creek is this line of vegetation right through here. My understanding.
Yeah, so it's pretty close to.
Right.
So we'll see what the sampling comes up with, but. Okay, so yeah, the and what I wanted to just say, first, I wanted to say thank you so much, John, and for the whole district, water district to take this on and be so, you know, persistent with the DTSC on this and for getting this more public publicly known. And we do feel locally that it's a really important issue. And so, yeah, I was just wanting the council and city to write a letter, just as the district is suggesting. And so that's what I wanted to support today. And so thank you to the city council also for taking this up and and considering the importance of it and for doing a letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And again, you can also email our congressman and our Assemblyman Wood and McGuire and or write them a letter or postcard. I'm sure that, you know, each of us could do that as well. Are there any other input from audience?
I have a quick comment, if that would be okay. I can't figure out how to raise my hand other than to.
Okay, identify yourself, please.
Okay, hi, my name's Jennifer Cult. I'm the director of Humboldt Baykeeper. And first I want to say I'm really thrilled that you had this on the agenda and have, you know, had invited John to come and have this discussion and and love that there's so many people watching and that there's all support for this. I just wanted to chime in to say Humboldt Baykeeper has been watching this really closely. And when the sample results come back, will really have a much better indication of how, you know, what the next steps will be, because DTSC has never sampled the surface water before. They've only sampled groundwater on the site. And so the fact that they're doing this, that they have done the surface water sampling is really great. And that will, you know, be a be a a big indication of the direction that they'll need to go. And then also, I just want to let everyone know that when they do develop a cleanup plan, it will require public review and comments under the California Environmental Quality Act. And so there will be lots of opportunity to provide input. And we'll be calling for DTSC to have public meetings and, you know, do a really good job of getting input from people, not just because of the drinking water concerns, but also the river in general and the aquatic habitat and the, you know, the fish and everything. So anyway, thank you so much. And we'll see, we'll see what the results show.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you for joining us. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make a comment or have a question on item four? All right, thank you, John. And Mandy, could you get that letter together? I think, I don't know if it needs to be in the form of a motion, but I think we need to send a letter. If you haven't already, I'd be happy to sign one.
Yeah. So Adeline, the original intent, when I asked this to be brought forth to the council after it was presented at REDAC, was to provide information to the public and get feedback, but then also get the approval for the council to send a letter representing the city with these concerns. So and everybody else so far and is is has sent a letter or will be. And I think it's really important that we have this essentially this united front to express how concerned we are and how important this waterway is and the water quality is to not only ourselves, but as Jen mentioned, aquatic habitat. So if if you need a motion, I would motion that we use the examples that have been sent provided by John and send a letter to DTSC on behalf of the city of Blue Lake and its residents.
Yeah, I second that.
Motion made by Summer Doherty, second by Elaine Hogan, to send a letter of support for from the city of Blue Lake using the template that has been provided. Is there any further discussion on the motion from council? Anything from audience?
Yes, please. Hello?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jacob Pounds. Worked with the Blue Lake Rancheria. And I am encouraged by the dialogue that I'm hearing tonight, that the the council is is considering signing on to the effort that's led by the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. It's extremely important, not only for the the human and aquatic habitats, but for every organism that relies on clean water. And it's also a an issue of tribal sovereignty in that that Blue Lake Rancheria also receives water from the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And I'd like to encourage the Blue Lake City Council to sign on to the letter that's being led by the water district.
Thank you, Jacob. I'm assuming the Rancheria has sent a letter as well.
Yeah, the Rancheria sent a letter in 2019, and that's available on the EnviroStore website for viewing. That's kind of when things kind of just started in the first place.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion. A second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mandy.
Yes, Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Obada.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Hogan.
Yeah.
It passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are on item five, appoint real property negotiators, government section code 54956.8. The property is the assessor parcel number 312-161-015 and 312-161-018. The city of Blue Lake negotiators, Amanda Mager, city manager, Russell Gann, city attorney. Negotiating parties, the Danco Group, Chris Dart, Haley Del Grande, Danco Legal Counsel. Under negotiation, potential ground lease and or property sale price and the terms of payment. And the city has been presented with a development concept for city-owned property in the Powers Creek District. In order to facilitate a final development proposal for consideration by the city council, staff is recommending the formation of a negotiating team to work through details, concepts, and development options. The negotiating team will bring concepts, recommendations, and detailed proposal options back to the council for consideration. And the recommended actions, we designate the negotiating team. So Mandy, did you want to start us off on this? And we do have a map in our packet of the area we're discussing, which I think most of us know very well. So now you want to just give us a little summary?
So as council knows, and for most of the people on the the meeting tonight know, the council's been approached by Danco Company. And so we got tried to develop a mixed use development on property owned by the city of Blue Lake, Powers Creek District. The proposal is very much in its infancy stage. There are no concrete plans or designs. There's some concept ideas. The proposal is being embedded under the opportunity zone, which has not been implemented at this time, but it's going through a process. So at this point, the the next step is to appoint a negotiating team, not to broker a deal, but to identify some opportunities and options to present back to council for consideration if this project were to move forward to a more solid state than it is currently. In the past, we've gone through this same process with Pacific Builders for the same type of development projects. And at that point, myself and Russ Gann, city attorney, were appointed to be able to facilitate conversations between the city and the developer in order to bring back options for the council's consideration. I would request, I think at this point, I did identify a conflict for myself at the previous meeting as a member of the Weat tribe. And I think it would be more appropriate to have someone other than myself on the negotiating team. Just for transparency's sake, and I know that issue has been brought up by some members of the public that they had that level of concern, and I I wholly appreciate that. And honestly, I really don't want my reputation, you know, tarnished anymore than it's already starting to be kind of drug through social media. So if the council would consider removing myself from from that position, I appreciate that. I think you have council members who could adequately, you know, participate in this part of the process. And I know Russ is here somewhere to talk a little bit further about what this process looks like. Some of the council has already been down this road in the past with past negotiations. But there are new council members that probably could be brought up to speed on kind of what that process looks like and what a negotiating team actually has the capacity to do and not to do. So if Russ is on, it might be.
Let me, Mandy, can I jump in? And Russ, can I jump in before you start? I just would like to take a big picture, step back, look at this process and really clarify that the process that we're going through tonight is somewhat procedural in matter in in manner. So this isn't, tonight, we are not, we're not selling the property, we're not signing any leases, we're not. We're not signing any leases. We're not deciding on any sort of building development or proposal. There's not an active proposal on the table for this property. So I just want to make sure that's really clear and then take the big picture step back and look at, um, the steps that are, that have been taken to move forward is, you know, started in 2018 with the Planning Commission in relooking at the zoning ordinances for the city and for the business park and going through that public process. And then for about the last year now, the council has had a public hearing at almost every council meeting. There's been a few that, that it skipped just for the purpose of gathering information and having it prepared for council and has opened it up to public comment as well. And we've had really good discussions back and forth with members of the public who have participated and looking at the zoning, the noise ordinances, the setbacks from the creek, uh, improvements for the trail, protections for the trail, a wide variety. And so we, we do have a summary of all those decisions and discussions that have been made and we'll bring them back again at the next council meeting. But then this is the next step when over a year ago, we had, like Manny said, Pacific Builders came to us with ideas. And so we went through this very same process to establish a negotiating team that would be that go-between with the builder and the council and say, well, you know, maybe we don't like this option. Here's a great idea and kind of help fine tune what is presented to the council and the public for comment. So this process, you know, it goes on and, and we start fine tuning what we want to see that happens down there. So there are opportunities as we move forward after tonight, once a plan is presented, for the public to engage and provide additional comment and feedback and help steer where we're going with this process. So I just want to make sure that's really clear tonight. A lot of things have been said on social media, but tonight is not about making a decision of what's being built down there or a, or a plan. There's not a plan. We're not selling it. We're not leasing it. There's no decision on the table tonight other than a procedural, um, uh, item to establish a member of council and our attorney, Russ Gans, as a negotiating member. And as Manny said, she will not be a member, uh, of the negotiating team. She's stepping down, uh, due to a conflict or a, a proposed conflict or potential one. So, um, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Well said, Summer. Thank you. That's a, that's good, a good way to clear it up because there is, um, some feelings that this is a done deal. I've heard a lot of, you know, fear and anguish and, you know, government works actually slowly and there are hoops we have to jump through and this is one of them. It sounds maybe a little more ominous than it is. I think that's why people got into high gear and we need to take it down to a lower gear. Um, so thank you for that. And as mayor, perfectly happy being.
Okay. Well, I would really. Really quick, Adeline, when we talk about, like, we want to get this done and we'd like to move forward with this, think about that in government terms. So that means a couple of years. This isn't tonight. This isn't next week or next month. So that's just a, a point that needs to be made. We would like to see something happen, yes. But in government terms, it's going to be a while.
Right, thank you. And then I just want to interject along with the idea that, um, you know, Mandy has been completely transparent from the very beginning when she first brought this up, that there is a potential conflict of interest, as any of us would have to do the same if something came up that we were involved in. And mostly it's from getting anything monetary out of the, um, project. And she's not getting that much, but there is that sense. So I would be perfectly willing as mayor of Blue Lake to be on the negotiating team or if someone else feels they're, um, more capable or, or really feeling the desire. Any of our council members are very competent people. So, um, you know, one of you can, can step up instead. That's, you know, that's something to be determined. Did Russ want to step in and make some comments, Mandy, about the issue?
I'm trying to find him.
Yes.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Yes, just briefly, I think, uh, your summaries are actually very accurate. Again, all that's on the agenda tonight is the initial formation of a negotiating team, which is a prerequisite under the open meetings law in California, the Brown Act, prior to any future closed session discussions with the council that might be of a sensitive nature relative to the price and or terms of payment of any proposal that may, uh, ultimately, uh, come forth from this potential purchaser. Uh, so again, tonight is just, uh, to get some direction from council as to who they'd like to appoint, uh, for the negotiation, uh, negotiating team and, uh, who would be available for the city to participate in that. Uh, and as to Manny's issue, uh, I don't believe that, uh, she has what would be deemed a conflict of interest, which would require recusal under, uh, applicable conflict of interest laws in California. But as a discretionary matter and for the appearance of propriety, she is electing to, uh, recuse herself and would rather not participate. So, uh, if a council member wants to serve on this committee, that is fine, of course. Um, would hope that it would be a council member with some time to devote to reviewing some email correspondence and, uh, other communications that may, uh, develop during the course of the negotiation. We ultimately may need another city, uh, staff member to participate, uh, if this progresses. Uh, but, uh, we could start with a council member appointee. If the council's comfortable.
Russ, I'd like to suggest that, as Adeline suggested, I mean, she could participate and has the time, uh, as a negoti-, one of the negotiators along with yourself, but just knowing that, um, Mandy is integral to the functionality of the city and the, and projects moving forward, that she is still able to provide, uh, assistance in the background, but not be a lead negotiator just for her own sake because she's asked to been, be recused. But we do have very confident staff along with Mandy and that would help support that process. So that's my recommendation.
Yeah, that would be fine, of course. And then, uh, to the extent we need information from the city, documents, et cetera, uh, pertinent background information on the subject real property, uh, we could still solicit that from Mandy or other at the city of, uh, Blue Lake.
Okay, um, is there any, um, further input from council?
Adeline, I would be happy to appoint you to that position. Um, I definitely appreciate your, your history in Blue Lake and, uh, someone who's having sort of flipped their mindset on the project, uh, starting out, sort of hesitant about an idea like that in Powers Creek and coming to be excited about something like that. I would be happy to appoint you to work on negotiations.
Thank, thank you for your confidence. I, I personally own real estate and have been interested in real estate my whole life, but this is a little different. And so I'll really be relying a lot on the, on the attorney for guidance on that, but I'd be happy to do it. And I think based on the fact that I'm retired and have probably the most time of anyone other than the council, other council members, um, but we could also have another council member if that was something that somebody wanted, wanted to have as well. We could have two. I don't know other, another staff member that would be able to do this. I don't know if Mandy has any ideas on that. Sue Ornellis is no longer, uh, employed by the city. So, um, because she would have been a good person since she was involved in the Powers Creek District. Do you have any other ideas about that, Mandy?
Um, you know, I, I would, I would be happy to participate as, at the staff level. I think, um, it provides enough, um, you know, uh, filter through council being involved and Russ, um, for me to participate at that level. Um, the rest of our team is, will be, uh, involved in this project on various levels through, um, you know, analyzing different impacts. Um, our city planners already involved, our city engineers already involved. So they all have different, different levels and degrees of insight into this project. So, um, I feel comfortable, you know, working at a staff level.
Okay, um, so the team then would consist of myself, the attorney. You're suggesting not, um, you're suggesting that the city engineer be part of the negotiating team or no, no? Okay. And then, um, Mandy, you would be a part of the team. And then there are, um, people from the Danco Group, Chris Dart, Haley Del Grande, which is their legal counsel would be on it as well. So I guess we have a negotiating team if, um, if we want to make that in the form of motion. But I know there's a lot of people that want to make maybe some input on this. Is there any other questions or comments from our council?
I, I was just going to say that, um, I'm eager to step in just because I, I really want to be able to participate in things. I'm, I also acknowledge though that I'm new and this seems like a really like long history issue. So, uh, yeah, I'm not, I'm feeling torn. And I, and I also want to trust the, you know, cap, capacity of, um, both you, Mandy and Adeline. Because you know, you know, you know the history, but I, I am eager to get involved.
So, um, would you like to be a part of the negotiating team, Olivia? Would you like to be a part of the negotiating team?
So it could be all of us, all three of us?
No, you can only have, okay, here's the thing with the city. You can only have two members of council be on a negotiating team. So it could be you and I or, you know, or myself and someone else. We can't have more than.
Okay.
Two, because three becomes a meeting and it's a quorum. It's a, it's a whole, uh, rule, but, um, you know, we could add one more council person if, um, if you or someone else wanted to be included, but we can't have any more than two on a, on a, on an adjunct committee.
And sorry to interrupt. Again, to be clear, uh, this negotiating committee for the city, they, the negotiating committee would have no power, uh, the negotiating parties would have no power to bind the city. Only the full city council, uh, can actually enter an agreement, uh, that would encumber this real property. So the matter is ultimately going to come back to the city council for review, consideration, potential public participation, uh, at multiple stages during this process. So just to be clear, basically the negotiating committee is just a point of contact for the interested, uh, real property purchasers, uh, to have a conduit contact with the city. And then their job is the negotiating team to return that information to the city. The city can make, the council as a whole can make the decision on what to.
Thanks for that clarification.
Adeline, yes, I'd love to participate in that team.
Okay. Okay. Done, all right. Um, is there any further, um, discussion from council? Is there anyone from audience that would like to participate in this discussion?
Adeline, before you open it up to the audience, um, just one point of clarification really quick is that, um, so keep in mind as a negotiating team, you are representing, uh, your constituents and city council when you're discussing these things. So it's, I urge caution in any promises or, uh, language that in, is encouraging to a developer that hasn't already been brought forth to the city and the public. So that's something I, um, would remind you of. Also, before opening up to public comment, just to remind everybody that the presentation that was provided at the last council meeting by Danco was a conceptual idea that they were proposing. We do not have any sort of plans along those lines. We haven't had further discussions, uh, with them. And we don't have a plan to present to the public yet for discussion and feedback. So, uh, the plan that was proposed is conceptual. So I just want to make sure that everybody, like, let's not get stuck on 50 low-income housing units. Let's talk, uh, like there are things that can be modified. There's nothing set in stone. There's not even a plan in place. So, uh, as a, an elected official, what's really helpful for me is to hear, yeah, I, I agree or I disagree, but here are some solutions. Here's what I want to see. And so it's, it's really, because I don't get around to talk to everybody and, and those that I do get to have meaningful conversations within the community, I get to have that back and forth and have a better understanding of what your vision is for the, the business park rather than just no. So I, I, it would be really helpful for me in your time if you can also provide some ideas and solutions and what you'd like to see down there. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Summer. Yeah, I, I think that's a good way to look at it is let's get the positives. What, what, what are we seeing? What's our vision for that? I mean, my, my vision is to have a kind of a village inside of a village, almost, a miniature village, if you will. Because if there's businesses, then, and there's residents, then the businesses could be a market or could be a candy store, could be an ice cream parlor, something, something that would be generated by the residents there. So that it could be a little, uh, micro-village, if you will, um, out there. Um, but you know, that's my vision, but you know, the, the town may want to see something else. I've, you know, gotten a lot of input about that. Um, I don't see any other questions or comments from council. So perhaps we can open it up.
Um, could we have a separate sort of community planning session, sort of like we did, uh, for the town square? It's more just to hear conceptual ideas about the development and what people might want to see there.
So we actually did something along those lines several years ago. We had a, um, was it kind of like a visioning workshop? And different members of our, our commissions participated, different members of the community participated. It was a two-day facilitated strategic kind of idea, planning, conceptual ideas of kind of the, before any developers came in to per, provide proposals, we wanted to have kind of a direction that we could send them in and where, how we wanted to, uh, essentially see the progress of Blue Lake. And so that was done a couple of years ago and some key points came out of that. And that's what's helping drive the ozone, is what's helping drive conceptual ideas for the business park and whatnot.
Good point, yeah. Um, Russ, did you want to, um, say anything more?
Nothing more at this point. Um, before you open it to public comment, you may want to entertain a motion so the public is aware of what you contemplate as well, uh, so that they're informed during their public comments. For example, if, uh, a motion were to be made to appoint, uh, myself and, and the, uh, two participating council members as, uh, the negotiating team, it may be worthwhile to do that in case the public has any specific comments, uh, on who would consist of the participating members on the negotiating team, uh, so that there's not a subsequent motion and then the public feels uninformed before they comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, I feel like the, um, the public is going to want to weigh in on something a little more broad, but I could be wrong on that. But we could, we could, uh, have the motion and then discuss after that. That's, um, the recommendation of the attorney.
I'd be happy to entertain a motion to appoint attorney Russell Gans, mayor Adeline Jones and council member Olivia Obadah to the negotiating team along with, uh, those members on the Danco Group.
Thank you, Summer. There's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Sure, I, I'll second that.
Thank you, Elaine.
And then, uh, ask the mayor to go ahead and ask for public comment now before ultimately taking action. A roll call.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Elaine Hogan. And is there any further discussion from council? Is there any further discussion from the public? David and Lynn Glenn, I see your hands raised. Thank you. Welcome. David and Lynn Glenn, I see your hands raised. Thank you. Welcome.
Um, hi, um, yes, I, how do I start this? I, I'm absolutely in opposed to even forming a committee on this. And I, the first time that I really heard about this project was the last meeting. We were on there because we were there to discuss, um, aspects of the ozone. And we, and we just happened to notice that this was down on the bottom of the agenda. And so we actually intentionally stepped all the way to the end of the meeting so that we could hear about it. In thinking about this, um, in, in between, I realized that, well, number one, we've been involved at various stages of this process, um, at, at the planning commission, talking about, uh, aspects of the ozone and then several times with, before the council. And in about, I think it was in about the mid 2019, we were at, um, at a, at a, planning commission meeting and we expressed, um, concerns about exactly this kind of a concept, um, about the idea of having a major, um, residential component of the, of the area. And, and we thought it was terrible. We were, the answer that we received at that time was, oh, don't worry. This, it, we're only talking about resident, uh, a, a small residential component that will support the commercial activity. That's what we were told at that time. Now we have exactly what we were concerned, what we were expressing concern about. So I, so anyway, in the intervening month, I've had a time to really think about this and clarify my own thinking about why I don't think this is a good idea. So I'd like to kind of read this presentation that I have here. Um, I approached it by approach, by, um, forming three questions. The first one was, does this pro- the proposed project meet the city's economic, uh, economic development needs? The second, um, uh, question was, how does the project meet the needs of low income residents? And the third, um, question is, is the argument that mixed residential and commercial use will increase commercial activities in the Powers Creek District sound? So I'd like to start with the first question here. Um, the, whether the, this pro- um, whether this proposed project meets the city's economic development needs. At the time in 1979, when Macintosh went down, when they closed, um, uh, the city recognized that they had a need to, to do two things. First, we were out of money, but second, but basically we needed to, um, you, we, we had an opportunity to use this area to do two things. One is to provide jobs for the community and the other one is to provide a sustained revenue flow for the city. It, it, we, we started in carrying that out and we basically, um, cited Ultra Power. And in, and what I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, they still, the Blue Lake Power pays us over a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year based on the lease payments that we had, um, that we negotiated at that point. Um, they also provided some jobs and, and basically they provided us the, um, necessary fronting money so that we had, were able to put in the infrastructure to develop the whole area, the, the, um, the roads and the sewer and water and, um, electricity for about, about two thirds of the area of the park. So this area is our best, this area is our best major resource for the ci- city to accomplish these goals. We want jobs because jobs are the way that wealth is distributed throughout the community. We want a sustained revenue stream because I don't have to tell you guys, you guys work on the budget. We're always need a sustained revenue stream. Um, while the city and the community have debated what the character of the area should be. It started out as a, a heavier industrial park. It, that we, in the, in the visioning, um, stuff, we changed the idea based on input from the public to a, a business park. And then recently it's, seems to be changing again to this, um, the Powers Creek District, which is um, this, this mixed, mixed use idea. In spite of that, even when we read over the, the, the proposed language in the ozone that we're talking about right now, light industrial uses are still the, the central core that meets both of those needs and they are expressly in the ozone. The, the, the lighting, the, the light industrial uses have never changed throughout all of the changes in characterization. They just, they haven't changed. They're, they're still the stated goal of what the, um, what this area is about. Using the, the major portion of this area for multifamily housing would effectively block the potential to meet those needs. I think that's really clear and, um, as you're, for two reasons. One, you're using about eighty to ninety percent of the remaining, um, available land. And two, multi-family residences are actually incompatible with light industry. You're not going to get, you might get a candy store. I don't, I personally don't believe you're ever going to get a candy store, but that's, I'll, I'll wait that, I'll, I'll move that down to the later question. But you're certainly not going to get another Tommaso's food processing place. And basically when a project does come along to the city, um, that, that meets those needs, that provides jobs and provides a revenue stream, you don't have any land left for them. You've totally eliminated the potential for the future for that use. So this, so the next question is, how does this project meet the needs of low income residents? Successful housing for low income residents should be integrated into existing residential areas. The city has areas like that, the area west of Greenwood and the area between railroad and Charton. Um, there's plenty of room to put in, um, low income housing as well as other types of housing. And they could be, they would be much more integrated into, um, into those areas. Secondly, the scale is too large for Blue Lake. Smaller multi-units, fam- multi-family units would be more appropriate and they would better fit into existing residential neighborhoods. In addition, some low income housing needs could be met, could be met by the use of ADUs that are fully integrated into existing neighborhoods. Now I understand that the city can't do that by itself. It requires the, um, the, uh, the cooperation of the people who put the ADUs on their property. But as a, as a landowner who used to, oh, he used to be a landlord to people with, um, who exactly fit this. They were section eight, um, tenants with, who I had great tenants. And, um, I, I think that that's entirely a possibility. It's not, it's not something that should be dismissed at all. The proposed project, which concentrates low income residents in a large, in large housing block or blocks in a, in a, in a light residential, light industrial area is the least desirable option for having, for, for how we deal with those people. The, uh, it pu- it puts them across the street from a failed power plant with rotting chip piles and down the street from a brewery, the city courtyard and a porta potty business. There's nothing wrong with any of those businesses. Those businesses are all appropriately located adjacent to other light industrial businesses. The only inappropriate and totally incompatible use for the development in this area is the proposed residential use. So, so, okay, so let's move to the last, uh, the last question. This question is, is the argument that mixed residential and commercial use will increase commercial activity in the Powers Creek District sound? I think that it's wrong. And my opinion comes from my experience trying to accomplish this goal, exactly this goal in the downtown area of the city during my 12 years as chair of the Blue Lake Planning Commission and eight years as president of the Blue Lake Economic Development Corporation. In the, in the period nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety, we required, um, developments in the city core to, to reserve commercial space on the ground floor. That's exactly what you say that you're doing. Gradually, we found that the developers were unable to locate commercial tenants. Gradually, we gave in to request to allow residential use for units that had sat empty for a year or more with the provision that those units would return to commercial use when it became feasible. To my knowledge, not one single one of those, um, units has returned to commercial, to commercial use because there are no commercial tenants. The problem was that there were simply not enough customers to sustain those hoped for businesses. The problem is not ours alone.
David, I'm going to interrupt you for just a moment and ask that you wrap up so that others can also speak.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'll move this ahead. The problem is not ours alone. Fieldbrook, Freshwater, Lolita, Manila and King Salmon have exactly the same kind of situation. They have no, they do not have commercial, uh, is it because they don't have customers. Um, the city of Trinidad and the community of Fields Landing have a few businesses due to their adjacency to ports, but they generally suffer from the problem also. In the past, when a significant portion of the wage earners worked in the woods and in the, or in the mills and, and there were a few cars available, Blue Lake sustained a business district with several groceries, a, a variety store, a doctor's office and other businesses. But after the closing of many mills, the modernization review resulting in needing fewer workers in the woods, the development of highway two ninety-nine as a trip to Arcata and Eureka and the increase of multi-car families. The result, uh, was that most people worked in jobs in the central core and they, in the central county and they shopped where they worked. This trend has continued and Blue Lake finds itself with fewer customers each year, even as it remains the same size. I wish it weren't so. I love the vision of developing an attractive mixed use area and having it flourish. It is a seductive vision. In Humboldt County, we have two existing examples of this strategy being successful. And we have one example in progress. The two successful examples are Ferndale and Old Town Eureka. The work in progress is the Creamery District. If we look at these examples, we see that they depend on four factors. A sufficient number of customers, an existing sustainable economy, existing iconic buildings and a substantial subsidy. All four factors must be present to make this thing work. It, three, three factors won't do and we have none of the four. I can't, I cannot imagine. This, this, this concept is unsound. Much as I would like it to be sound, it is unsound and it will not make commercial, um, activity happen there. And it will block any further use for the real needs, the real economic needs of Blue Lake. So.
So you know, David,
Yeah.
Summer, Summer started out by saying that, you know, let's talk about what we oppose, oppose, oppose. So let's look at the glass half full. So what is your vision for that piece of property? Now I don't want to talk about other pieces. I'm talking about that piece.
Okay, okay. My vision would be that somehow that we take the, we find a sp- a funding source and we literally build, I know Mandy's going to hate this because she said she hates it, but long, empty buildings that can be divided up. And when, when we have, when Rhonda comes to us with an idea to move the bakery here, we go, great, we can move you in in four weeks because the building's already there. And that way, what that does is that then when we go to negotiate a lease on some, on a project, we're not negotiating ground only. We're, we're negotiating the ground plus the, the, um, the building. And that gives us more of a sustained, um, a sustained revenue flow, which is what we really need to, to be, to have the, the city, um, the city finances be sound.
But there's no builders that want to build a spec of just a one floor business. They need the residences in the two other floors to sustain the bottom level. Okay? So talk about pie in the sky. That's what you're talking about.
No, I'm saying that, 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 that idea that we have to rely on a builder is, is, is wrong. It, we would need to be, go into the development business, which is exactly what we did at the time that we set up the Blue Lake Development, Economic Development Corporation. We realized that we could not find the, the builders out in the market to do things. And so we had to, the, the, um, happen itself. We had to do it ourselves, basically. But we have, but we're not a, if you look around this, this city, we have a lot of talent here. We really do. We would have to find the funding and that would be, I think that's the real problem. And, and that would have to be overcome, but I believe. So, that's one. I mean, the other one, the other one is, and I know you said, don't go over, over to other properties, but I'm going to, I'm going to hear for really quickly. In four years, when Blue Lake Power goes away, we would figure out how to tear down the mill, scrape the stuff, get rid of the rotting chip piles. I don't know how that, that's going to be. These people have given us so much garbage to deal with. And, and then, and then scrape it all off and, and put, put in the giant solar array all the way out. And, and you know, and it doesn't create jobs other than the construction jobs, but it creates a wonderful revenue stream that'll last just as long as the, as everybody's using solar power. So, you know, I, I think that there are other alternatives, but if we put in this ju- this, it is a very large, um, multi-family, um, project, there won't be.
It might not be that large. Again, negotiations, that's a key word, negotiation. Okay? We don't know. We're, we're looking at these things. And if you think it's time wasted, well, my time is going to be wasted then or whatever. But it's worth it to, to look at it. And that's how I'm, yeah.
Let's move, let's move on to others that have their hands up so they can speak as well.
Thank you, Summer. Chris?
I just would like to say thank you to David for a very well thought out presentation. And I too, after being here for almost forty years, just worry about the change of, from, uh, kind of a bedroom community to something that would be much more. So, um, I, I too, um, Dave and I, I guess, are both for light industrial. And this may be presumptuous, but, um, fully, fully agree with Dave. David, I think, uh, I think it would, would change, change our community in, in ways with light and sound and traffic and on and on it goes. So, it, it's a, it's quite a, quite a scary venture, I think in some ways, but I think it was articulated very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Phoebe Smith?
Hi, thanks for, um, being here. Uh, my name is Phoebe and I live on Third and I've lived here since two thousand and two. And I'm kind of new to this issue, but I just want to put forward, uh, the idea of the, um, equity in this discussion. And as a white settler here in historically and presently we ought land, I think it's really important that, um, I mean, what my understanding is that this housing would prioritize we ought tribal members. And I think as guests here on this colonized territory, as white people, we need to reexamine where we're coming from and consider an equity lens on this project. My only concern is those poor women down at the post office. It feels like the post office is busier than it's ever been. And if we can get more people in the post office. But I think housing for people, and I want, and I want to say that David, to call folks that would live here, those people, I think you need to check your privilege. Thank you.
Thank you, Phoebe. I see a hand, I see lots of hands. Uh, Giorgio, would you like to come in now?
Um, yeah.
I can't hear Giorgio. Giorgio, unmute, unmute. Okay. We're not going to get Giorgio, I don't think.
Okay, how's this? Much better?
That's better, Giorgio. You're unmuted now. Go ahead.
I'm Joel Kanzanari and Giorgio is a nickname of mine. I'd like to make a couple of comments. Uh, on December twenty-second, I wrote a letter to the council supporting. On December 22nd, I wrote a letter to the council supporting your efforts to reclassify sections of this property. I still support that, but my intention was to not eliminate light manufacturing uses. My experience with residences above retail spaces goes back a long ways. And if one looks around at the cities and county, there's a plethora of vacant storefronts going unused right now. So my first point is retail on the bottom floor of commercial uses, residence uses should go in the central business district of the community. The, the second point is the inherent conflicts that happen when you have light manufacturing mixed with residential. One need only look no further than the Lager Bar that was forced to close from a nuisance situation with a nearby neighbor.
That's not why it closed.
Okay, are we having a debate, or are we going to let you meet?
Okay, go ahead. No, we won't.
My, my, my other point about the, the development, I, I fully understand this is just a conceptual type thing, but the Danko Group has been very successful in developing housing tracks. So I think the basis of the negotiating team is are we negotiating for housing, which is what Danko firm does. And if that's the case, we need to figure out how many houses really are we negotiating for. But the point of that discussion is, is a city willing to give up its capacity in the sewer treatment plant for residential uses, which by my understanding never pulls their full weight when you look at police services, fire services, water and sewer, and other city things? Or should we leave some capacity behind for light manufacturing, which I supported in my December 22nd letter? So I'm, I'm not opposed to the negotiating team going forward, but the concept on the table, with all due respect to Councilwoman Doherty, seems to be residential with commercial on the bottom floor. So thanks for the opportunity to comment. I'll, I want to refer you to an email I sent to the mayor and to Mandy this more evening time. I hope you incorporate that in your evaluations for the discussion. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Joel. And I, I didn't mean to debate, but I, I really don't like it when a, a fact is put forward that's not a fact. In fact, the Lager Bar was closed because of COVID. It wasn't because of any other reason. Just to clarify that. That's all I meant by that. I wasn't going to debate that. I just don't like non-facts be brought up. Okay, Jonathan? Heath, oh, Hearn, Jonathan Hearn, can you unmute, please?
My name's Jonathan Hearn. I'm not a resident of Blue Lake. I live in Arcata. One of the things that kind of caught my ear was kind of talking about, uh, what's around that area. I think that does serve a good point, but I ultimately think we, if I were to just put my two cents in for what that matters of, it would make more sense, instead of looking at places like Fieldbrook or Lolita for, for, for how this place would turn out, it would be better to look at Dan Colder site at Samoa or any, or any of the rancherias or any of the other indigenous-run societies. I think that would be a, a better comparison rather than Lolita and, and Fieldbrook. That's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you, Jonathan. Okay, um, let's see. Jay Smith, have you, have you come in yet? Jay Smith, did you want to?
Uh, no, I was not raising my hand.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll move on then. I'm sorry. Do you see any other hands raised? Mandy, I'm having trouble seeing raised hands.
Jean raising her hand.
Okay, I'm sorry. Jean, Jean Lynch, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Hey, I have a question, and maybe Russell Gans could answer this for me. I sometimes look at information and, and unclear and don't want to get on the outside of what the topic is, but, um, we have Prop 10, Article 34 in the state of California, which restricts low-income housing development in cities if there is financial help from outside the groups that are building it for, without having public participation and an election. And if Russell Gans could answer, is that possible that this would actually have to be an election within the city of Blue Lake to okay this concept of construction? And that's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Jean. Russell, did you hear her question?
I did, and to answer the question, we'd have to get to the point where we have an identified buyer and an identification of the, the purchase money funds for any proposed project. So it would be premature to provide a legal assessment as to, oh, any California law that may preclude a proposed purchaser or a proposed development. Bear in mind there are two aspects of it. Until the real property owner actually acquires and purchases the property, a development plan will not be forthcoming. Again, of course, in the permit and development process, the public participation is multiple avenues for that as well. Anyway, too early to answer that question.
And just to give some background information, Jean, the, what you're referring to was a law that was written in the 1950s that was specifically written along racial and income lines to disallow housing development to come into communities. It's a very contentious proposition. It's being, it'll be reassessed, I believe, next year to throw out based upon constitutionality issues, racial discrimination and income discrimination. It's a very discriminatory proposition on a host of levels, and there are multiple ways that these projects can be structured to get around Prop 10 regulations. And the state has also recognized the discriminatory nature of Prop 10 and has multiple avenues for public housing to move forward outside of that scope.
I, I understand. I've read that, that there is an idea of discrimination on this, but I also understand that it's, that it's a law that was passed by the people of the state of California, which cannot be ignored without rescinding the law. That is still a law that's in effect, regardless of, of, an idea or a thought of the value of the law or how the law was put as a law, it is still a valid law, and it has to be rescinded by vote within the state of California.
Right, or it just needs to be structured outside the context of that law, which is.
So, so the, so, so what I, what I'm hearing with that is if somebody doesn't like the law, they can structure or go around the law.
Yes.
So we, I might have a problem with that, given that the, the idea of the council and people that work for city government, city government are to uphold the laws of the state.
I think right now it's too early to even bring this up, considering what Russ just mentioned, that this isn't a piece of property that's for sale right now, Jean. And frankly, I recognize that this law is in place, even though I don't agree with it, and I find it very discriminating in all sorts of aspects. So in this place, in this city, we're going to move forward in a fashion that includes everybody, and it will be, you know, we're going to have open discussions. But I think, and I want to go back to what Phoebe said earlier, I heard those terms too. Those people struck me completely wrong. Like, that is so inappropriate to refer to low-income or any minority as those people. And I think at this point, let's move forward in a discussion that talks about positive change and what the community sees for this piece of property in an open-minded fashion, please. Can we move on to the next?
Excuse, excuse me, but when you're stating low, no, wait, when you're stating low income, are you?
This is not a debate.
Low, no, 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 wait a minute. I'm low income.
Exactly.
I'm low income. Does that matter?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so the, the propositions that are presented to the state of California protect all people.
But we are looking to sell this property, Jean. So I'm not sure why this is being brought up. So thanks for your point.
Yes, it was, it, no, what stated.
What stated that the property was possibly for sale. Yeah.
I can mute.
Thank you. Please do. Please let the next speaker.
I could go get a gavel. I can have one in the other room. Um, okay, um, thank you for your input. I mean, I, I want to say that I am very strongly against selling this land. I really want to lease this land. We still have zoning ordinances that protect our land, but I am very strongly opposed to selling our land. I would very much like to lease it. Somebody needs to mute. All right, are there any other, um, I, questions or comments on this motion?
I've seen Jamie's hand up and Heather, Erica, Mackenzie, they're all at the top.
Yeah, so you have Julie Christie or Julie McGill.
Thank you, Mandy, and, and thank you, everybody, for taking your time. I, I really think it's important that everybody appreciates the time and energy that you guys put into everything that you do. In regards back to Adeline's comment prior with David and her really being adamant asking what his envision was for that property that's the city's at this current time, I just want to reiterate what my commentary was at the prior meeting, that I think it's very special that we have that open space. It's a great place for access to the river bar that's the most appropriate access that the city has to, to propagate to any recreational use. And I, I think that land's valuable, as much as we all know. I appreciate that you guys very much clarified that this is just the beginning of the process, and I really promote that as the process moves on, that there's good communication with the rest of the, the city.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you for your input. Who was next, Amanda?
Um, Jamie Camperin?
Okay, Jamie.
Yeah, my name's Jonas. Actually, I'm Jonas and Jamie. We live here on A Street. I'm encouraged by the state that this idea is at. I think I've felt prey to the social media thing, that it was somehow some kind of a done deal. I, I spend very little time on Facebook and whatever, so I think I take people for their word, and I think. So I'm encouraged at the, at the state that this project is in, and, you know, we're, it started with, you know, who is the negotiating team, and I wanted to support Mandy being part of that. I think that it seemed really appropriate. And also, you know, really supporting the city maintaining ownership of that land and how critically valuable open city public, I guess I mean publicly-owned property is, and you, you just never get that back if it's ever let go. Or at least, the process of getting it back is very difficult, so. But I, I do, I do support, you know, some sort of a mixed-use residential. I'm not sure if that's the exact place for it, but I'm glad that this is the beginning, and we're just entertaining a, you know, we're entertaining an offer as a community as opposed to it being some sort of done deal. And so I'm glad that that's the stage we're at and happy to continue to participate, so. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Thank you for zooming in. Who is next?
Heather J.
Hello again. I have my video this time. I spoke earlier just about traffic concerns as well as theft. And that's honestly the thing at this stage that just comes to me, regardless of what the population may be or what might develop. There can, in the foreseeable future, be increased traffic. And so I just am excited to see, and will be looking forward to see what comes at the next meeting with the truck route survey results and how the city's going to move forward and to just with this very beginning stage of this proposed project, whatever it may become, to just keep that increase of traffic and population in mind and what may occur with just that natural process of more people and more traffic. That's all, that's all I can really think of right now.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
Good seeing you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
Okay, who's next, Mandy?
We have, I'm pretty sure it's not Mackenzie Ponte, but it might be Lori.
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
Okay, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Mandy, it's Dave.
Oh, hi, Dave.
Oh, Dave Ponte, okay.
Yeah, this is Dave Ponte, 311 H Street, been here for about 30 years, and always been curious about the industrial park. I was on the board there many, many years ago. My biggest concern, I suppose, is that I've always thought that development of the historic downtown was really the most important thing that we needed to do in order to try to increase business presence. You know, as far as residential, I've never have even thought about that particular area of the, the old industrial park, Powers Creek area, as being a residential site. Don't know exactly why anybody would want to live across from the old Blue Lake Power, given its present state. But I think that our concerns and our revenues and our interests should be more in the development of the historic downtown and the renovation of the historic buildings that we have. I think that would be more encouraging to people coming to Blue Lake and, you know, being interested in taking part in the businesses that would develop there, as well as, you know, the business of people living within the city limits of Blue Lake as well. And I don't know, Lori, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no.
Thanks, Adeline. Thanks, Mandy. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
Thanks, Lori. Thank you for zooming in. Amanda, who else DC?
You have Erica Dyckhouse and Kat Napier.
Okay, let's do Erica Dyckhouse first.
Hi, this is, actually, it's just Kat. And for once, Eric is going to be quiet. It's amazing. So, um, I agree that selling the property, when it's gone, it's gone, and that just, um, it's an asset beyond any, any money that we could get for, away from selling it, because then we don't necessarily get to do as we choose with it. I, I just want to take a moment and first say, Blue Lake is a special place. And those of us who have been lucky enough to find our way here or to have been here for decades, we're all part of that fabric that makes this place so cool and so great. And right now, I feel our community kind of dividing into sides, and there's a lot of friction, and there's a lot of fear. And I think that if we can step back and have a council meeting specifically to discuss this aspect of development, even if this has been done before, I think we're at the right time now to have this discussion as a whole community about who we are, how we can help each other, how we can house each other, how we can find jobs. When I look at this piece over on Taylor Way, I really, I feel like a 50-unit building would absolutely create a distressing us and them. And I think we're already seeing a division. That's where that's coming from. Those people over there, when I heard those words too, my hair stood on. Those people over there, when I heard those words too, my hair stood high and because I know what that means. I've been one of those people also living in low income housing. And it didn't help that all around me was low income housing. Every person I knew had a car that was screwed up or no car at all. You know, we, there's no, who are you going to get a job from? So if we're going to build within our community, then let's really build within our community and not put people that many people on the edge of town in an industrial park with gravel in the air. You know, the, the fine gravel dust and say that that's okay. So that's just from, I guess, a very human standpoint. Then looking at the practical part with infrastructure, the impact on traffic. Um, I think by now, almost everybody in town knows I'd love to see a stop sign at Greenwood and Railroad, and if we ever get one.
Yay.
So with that said, um, I, I hope in the future and soon, we could have a larger conversation about what to do with this property. In the meantime, I would love to see if the city has any ideas on how you can support us homeowners in doing some additional dwelling units. By waiving any kind of permit fees, by helping us with the setbacks, uh by getting the uh building inspector who will be reasonable, fair and honest in our process. Um, I would love to have any person uh be able to have a home rather than live in a dugout or in a trailer on a street. And I'm willing to have part of my property do that, but I also have to be able to do it where I can sustain it. Lastly, what I would encourage for the city to do is, why do we need a partner in this? Why do we have to sell it or even lease it? Compass Credit, uh Compass Credit Union, and then also Co-Central Credit Union. Let's talk to our local lenders and see what they may bring on board, because this is our community. We could get more money by renting these places at an affordable rent than we're ever going to see in retail, be it ice cream or a t-shirt shop or candy store. Why can't we also be the landowners? So that's what I got to say. I appreciate your time, you guys.
Thank you, Kat. That discussion has come up of being a landlord and that, that brings up a whole nother idea, because we, that through the years has come up, so it's an interesting idea. Um, and somebody mentioned property west of Greenwood, and there is a subdivision that's proposed there. It's not very large, because a lot of that land is in wetlands. It's in a flood, flood zone, so it can't be really um developed that much. And then uh Blue Lake Power was brought up. Um, and one of the reasons why I ran for city council this last time was because the lease to Blue Lake Power will be up in twenty twenty-five. And so these next few years are going to be critical. They've asked for extensions and we've been very clear, no, we don't want any more extensions, but there's going to be a lot of movement. Uh, there's going to be something that's going to be happening. I definitely wanted to be a part of it. That was one of my biggest reasons for running. Um, let's move on to Trevor Estelow.
So this is actually Emily Walter. Um, and hopefully I won't be sticking my foot in my mouth, but when David said other people, I don't think he was referring to people as other people. He was referring to what Kat just said, that if you had a large low income housing in that specific location, you would be creating the other people, like because of like what Kat just said, and she said she's experienced. That's not an unknown or new, you know, idea. Um, so, and I also agree that I think we should be focusing on like industry. I appreciate the council listening to the city, the, the people of the city. Um, even if we're not all in agreement, we're all trying to get our thoughts out. And especially before, you know, now you're, you know, creating a group, you're going to be paying for the city attorney to spend his time to focus on a project that maybe the city really doesn't, the, the people of the city don't want. Even though it's not fully defined, but we seem to know enough. Um, but mostly I just want to thank you for listening to everyone. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Emily. Uh. Juliana's iPhone?
Adeline, yes, it's Julie Christie again, and I just wanted to jump in one more time because I am just curious, as this progresses, you just mentioned the expiration of the lease. And is that one entire parcel conjoined? Will it be conjoined with the zoning changing as an opportunial use of zoning? And, and perhaps uh keeping communication with the city and um all the individuals involved with what the city's um goals would be if it is um involved and lease expires, what those goals will be in the future?
So as I understand it, the opportunity zone is for the entire Powers Creek District. So yes, that would be part of it.
And at this point, we're not recommending uh that it be rezoned, because we do have a current um industrial use and we do have a current lease agreement and it's um we wanted to be able to maintain uh that position and not um and not overlay a new zone on an existing um business for the sake of um operational continuity.
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, right. We wouldn't do it now. Yeah, you couldn't do it now. Exactly. They're grandfathered in. Uh, Merritt Lindgren, we haven't heard from you. Merritt Lindgren. All right, well, we can move on to-
I'm nude. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um. I'm new at this. I haven't heard about this until just yesterday. And I, it's important to me about the character of Blue Lake and how this proceeds. I know you guys are real early in the beginning and I don't want to get off the topic of the negotiators, but I, I don't understand what the Weot tribe is involved with this. I heard it, it, it could impact the voting public of Blue Lake by ten percent. And if they're all going to go into there, that would be an overwhelming influence on this, on the city, on how we proceed with who gets elected even. Um. Could you explain what the Blue, the Weot tribe's role in this development is? Thank you.
Thank you, Merritt. Okay, Mandy, in a nutshell.
Sure. So um the project as proposed at this time is a um would be a, a fun, would be funded through the state of California's low income housing tax credit program. And in order to be competitive for those funds, you have to meet certain criterias. And there are specific allocations that are set aside for tribes, um for disadvantaged communities, um and different um configurations of, of development. And as proposed, uh a partnership with the Weot tribe would allow this funding application to compete under a tribal allocation um funding stream. And then the city of Blue Lake is already designated as a disadvantaged community. I know that people are really um shocked to hear that. Um, we do have a lot of low income residents already. Um, and we are, we do meet some of the thresholds for an application, uh but partnering with the tribe would allow uh the application to compete at a different level. Um, the Weot tribe, this is Weot territory. Um, and the Weot tribe's been working for a number of years with uh Delarte. They've been looking at working with Delarte to provide student housing, um to have other collaborations and they've reached out to the city and the city has reached out to the tribe to see how we can be better partners um as we move forward in the community. And I think it's um important for the, the community and the city to recognize that this is uh Weot ancestral territory. Um, and there's a lot of great opportunities for partnership and this could be one of those opportunities.
Thank you.
Uh, Sugata?
Yeah, hello. Thank you all for taking the time to let me speak here. My name's uh Clark Sugata. And more of you know my wife, Keiko, because she runs the coffee shop in town. Um, but you know, as, as I'm understanding this conversation, basically what we need to be centering on is that this is, that we're, we're trying to pass the motion to put together a negotiating team. And in my mind, this is, this is the point of exploration. And I think that it would seem foolish in a certain way to like not explore opportunities here. There, I, I think that on both sides of the argument here, people are raising points of merit. And yet at the same time, we are getting ahead of ourselves in the fact that we don't have a proposed development plan on the table. We're, we're coming together as a community and we're saying, do we want to explore what opportunities could be out there? And I think that that's the direction we have to be pointing in. Now, I understand that I am new. I've lived in Blue Lake four years, but we're very invested in the community. Our children grow here. We've started a business here. We are going to live in Humboldt. Um, you know, for the rest of our lives, as long as I get tenure next year, um which hopefully will happen. Um, and and, and I, and I understand that there is a certain innate hesitation or a resistance in people to change. Because we all get very locked into memories and what a place was and what a place meant. But we have to face a certain reality, and it's an uncomfortable reality, but that if places don't change, they die. They die out. And change does not have to be scary. Change can be incredibly positive. It opens up a lot of new opportunities. Um, there are a lot of, you know, there are a lot of talented people, as people have noted inside Blue Lake. There's a lot of people with a lot of energy. There are people's names on the screen right now that I've talked to in the street and all we do is talk about business ideas. And you want to know why they don't happen? Because there's nowhere to start a business. We walked through the streets of Blue Lake up and down for two years looking for a business. And finally, a little office space opened up and we jumped on it. And we had to sink in our life savings to put plumbing in a wall and run an electric to turn an old office building into a coffee shop. But that's what we wanted to do. And the result has been beautiful, because the community supports us in a year of a global pandemic. We opened in January. We're doing fine. You know, we're not raking in the dough, but we're doing fine. And we didn't start this business for money. We started it for community. We said, this is how we're going to embed ourselves in the community. We want our kids to have a place to go after school, to get an ice cream cone with their friends. This is the kind of community we want to build. And that's the key thing here. We're talking about how do we want to build? How do we want to do something? The, 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 the reality is that we do not have the necessary means to attract business or create business, because there is no space. And so while I understand that this may not be the opportune or the perfect project or anything like that, for us to be afraid to explore the opportunity is absolute, it's ridiculous, in my opinion. And it just reeks of like fear and that fear opens us up to the division that other people have been speaking about. We'd be far better off saying, we're going to move forward and look at opportunities and just be transparent about that process and come together and deliberate over it. And I have no doubt that we can come up with some great ideas. But don't sell out the idea that there are opportunities for businesses here. There are, there, we attract a lot of people. But people come in and they do their recreation and they leave because there's nowhere to eat. But now they come and they get coffee at least, and we can do more. And I'm not afraid to have other businesses in town. They're not going to hurt me. They're just going to bring more synergy. That's what my business needs, is I need more business, because I need more energy flowing through the city to get people to come in. So I just want to say that in this motion that's on the floor to put together a negotiating team, I think we should support it. Whether you like the end project or not, you should be supportive of the idea that we should explore opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Clark. Very well said. Okay, uh, Ponte? Did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, it's, it's Lori this time.
Okay, Lori, hi.
Hi. Um, so a couple things. Um. A lot of people don't know David Glenn, uh, or how long David's been here. He mentioned how long he's been here, he and Lynn. Um, we've known them a long time and um, Adeline, you know them too, from uh, from St. Joseph's. Um, I think that when David said those people, it was misunderstood. Um, he would be the last person who um should be taken by that one term um as something derogatory and negative. So I just wanted to say that. Um, and I appreciate Olivia stepping forward to um be on this team. Um, I think that you have a fresh mind and you're new to the council and I'm excited that, you know, you'll bring a different perspective and an open mind. So I, I think that's really great. Um, I have concerns also too about, because I've been here a long time. Um, I also have grandkids that go to Blue Lake School, so all the issues of parking and driving and picking kids up and dropping kids off. Um, I, I hear all of that and I appreciate all of that. So I, I'm glad that the council is hearing those issues. Um, but I think that I'm glad that, that it's been put out there, that this uh negotiating and, and the, the idea of development is in the infancy um of discussion, because I think that's where it needs to be. There um are, have been people that um have been talking and um and have a lot more information than most of us. It's exciting to see that so many people have had more ability to engage in this um council meeting, because we're all doing it remotely. Um, and I think that's kind of, kind of nice, because you know, you all put in the time in, at the Skinner store to have these meetings and most of us don't show up. Um, so maybe this is kind of like the new forum to do this, so that you can get a lot more input. Um, so I appreciate that and I appreciate your time. And, you know, here it's after nine and you're still here. So I, I just kind of wanted to make those issues. I, I felt real adamant about stepping up for David Glenn. Um, because if you had the opportunity to talk to him and Lynn um and know their history, and David's been very involved in, in Blue Lake for a long period of time. Um, I think that what was heard and what's said and what's taken off as being something negative, um, it, you should, you should talk to him personally, because I think that um that was totally misunderstood. So thank you guys for your time tonight and um, you know, we'll keep attending these meetings and I think Zoom is okay, but um, Olivia, good, you know, thank you for stepping up and being part of that. And Adeline, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you. Elise, you wanted to make a comment?
See, I'm gonna see if I can do this without messing it up. Um, I would also like to make a statement in support of David. I um, I don't know David very well, but I believe that his words were um probably misunderstood. And um, and I think that part of the, part of what he was was talking about, Kat really um explained well, where we don't want to create a situation where it's us and them, where we have, where we have a, a mini community separated from the community of Blue Lake. The thing that makes Blue Lake so special is community. And um, and to um I think it should be really um a primary goal to keep whatever we do um in terms of this, this new use, be something that enhances community and doesn't separate and doesn't um, doesn't divide. Um, so the idea that we, that one single housing development would increase the population of Blue Lake by ten percent, um, that is scary, you know, and I think a lot of people are excited about opportunity and investigating new things. But changing the demographic of our town that dramatically with one project is a pretty scary proposition. Um, and I do also want to point out that I'm, I'm sitting here with um the agenda item on my screen here. Um. and I think that the wording of this agenda item perhaps was misleading. It really makes it sound like you're ready to, to do a deal. Saying, under negotiation, potential ground lease and/or property sale, price, terms of payment. It sounds like you're like ready to, you know, sign on the line. So I would encourage you in future to, um, to maybe consider the wording of agenda items, um, in order to help people understand better what's going on. And possibly with something that is this, this charged for the community to put out some more explanation so that when people read an agenda item like that, they can click on a link or go to a document and learn more about what it's about before getting upset. Um, I personally spent hours yesterday looking for information about this and I couldn't find it. And Erica did post some of that information. Um, it was embedded in some other documents that were around, but they weren't labeled as this is what this is. And it wasn't until Merritt asked the question tonight, how is the tribe involved in this, that I got any clarity about that issue? And I do have another question about that revenue, um, stream. And, and my question is, is it a grant? Is it grant funding or is it a loan program?
Um, the low income housing tax credits is a grant program. Um, the, the tax credits are brokered on the open market um, and are sold off to support the development. Um, so it's a pretty complicated uh, funding structure. And, um, Danco's been very successful in being able to put these funding packages together and, um, not, there's not very many developers around. There's none locally that are doing it. Um, Danco has projects from uh, Northern California down, you know, to Southern California, brokering these projects. It's very costly to put them together. Um, like I said, you have to sell the tax credits out on the open market. Um, and there's a lot of layers of legality associated with that. Um, and those layers also translate down to the development project itself. Which requires, uh, ongoing funding for maintenance and operation, um, and compliance monitoring. So it's a very technical process that not many people have the expertise to pull off, but there is a lot of money out there if you have the expertise to package the deal.
And so that's
When you're looking at a project like this, you're probably looking at nine to 11 million dollars, um, in investment.
And, and, and a substantial portion of that would be grant funded then? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, it would be all funded through the state of California.
Okay. So, so the investment that Danco puts into this, um, is kind of is the organizational in the front, the front aspect of it.
Yeah, you also can participate in project management, um, for ongoing management of the improvement because there has to be a high level of management to ensure that it complies with the state mandates. Um, for a very, I think it's like a 15 year period of time.
And Danco would own that building, would they not?
No.
Who would own that?
That's, uh, that hasn't been decided yet what that would look like.
Okay.
Thank you, Elise. Um, it's 10 minutes after nine. We are usually supposed to end at nine o'clock. Um, I don't see any new hands going up. I see some people
My new hand, I can't figure out how to use your machine to do it.
Oh, I'm Sarah. I'm sorry, Scott. Yeah, we didn't hear from you. Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, I'd like to introduce myself as a resident of Blue Lake and thank you for your opportunity to discuss the project. I fully support careful development of the project site with public participation at each step of the way. Uh, members of the council ask for solutions and I want to offer you one. I request that as the agenda item for this uh, item five and as your minutes of February 23 reflect, a development proposal was presented to you. However, when I went to go read it today at City Hall, there is no document. So I'd like to request that you take no action on this motion tonight on the floor or that you defeat it and come back with a better motion. Because I agree with many of the things said by Clark Sugata. Exploring this is great. I thought Summer did a nice job jumping in and taking a step back. Um, I also want to support what Chris said about having a community meeting. But I think it would be a mistake to follow the guidance that your attorney gave you to put this as an agenda item and then motion before hearing all the comments you've now heard. Because it gives you the legal authority to negotiate a deal. It gives you the legal authority to have closed session meetings the public won't participate in. I really believe that what's needed, and this is meant as a very friendly kind, uh, comment to be helpful, is that you need to develop a written development proposal, either one that the city council wants or one that your developer wants to suggest you consider before you negotiate the specifics of a deal. This idea about doing this with community involvement with just a planning meeting or a special meeting of the council would be wonderful. But any proposed detailed development options or plans should include details of who will obtain the income from commercial leases, the rental income or the separate fees, permits and real property fees or leases. How many residential units? There've been some concerns you've heard tonight about 50 units. That was presented to you at your last meeting as a proposal, but again, it was a verbal presentation as I understand it. I guess that meeting was not recorded on Zoom. How many residential units will be low income or set aside for tribal members? And I want to say clearly that I support the involvement of the tribe. I think working with the Wiat people, having a partner in this project would be a wonderful idea. And sure, they should be given a priority assignment if that's agreed by both Blue Lake community and the tribal community. But more importantly, for this to be the green, good project we all want it to be, those apartments on the second floor should be associated with employees on the businesses of the first floor so they don't have to commute to a job in McKinleyville, Eureka or Arcata. That would make this a real community benefit. I'd suggest you set aside a specific number of apartments for those business employees or business owners. But several times tonight, your attorney, Mr. Gans, has said that you're going to have the legal authority to take these actions for the sale of reproperty. Yet your mayor and other members of the council have expressed a desire to do something else. So I think this motion before you should not be approved this evening, but rather replaced with a better meeting, a better proposal or a planning so you can develop the development proposal in writing for your community and your residents to review. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott. Um, we've heard from Merritt, we've heard from Elise. So I'm looking for someone that might be new that would like to speak. I'm not seeing anyone. Um,
Mayor Jones, how would you like to, me to introduce the written comments that were
Excuse me, Adeline. This is Lynn and I was, my hand.
Oh.
And I haven't, and I haven't made a comment yet. And I'll be brief because you are getting late and you have things to do. Um, I just want to say I agree with Scott. But also I've been surprised, I've been looking on the agenda uh, for the item that was the closure to the ozone language because we were pretty, pretty involved in, um, the development of the ozone. And at that time, I was going to say to the council, this is so exciting. Now, this is a great time to do some kind of meeting and as some people have already suggested, um, Clark among them, that this is a time to look at this property and talk about what you want. And I was really surprised to see this project jump in before the ozone was even completed. And then really surprised to hear the council say, yeah, we all support this. Let's go. I was like, what? That, this is so strange to me because I really was expecting there was going to be a progression from the development of the ozone. And then also Summer mentioned there was some, there was some visioning done a couple of years ago. And I would like to see, is there, was there a report generated from that? I'd love to see what the, um, ideas were and what came out of those meetings. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we had some, uh, comments made by, um, a written um, notes to us, letters, and, um, these came in since our meeting, uh, was meant was, um, our meeting packets were sent out. So, uh, Amanda, did you want to read those quickly for us?
Yeah, I, I don't know what the process is, if they need to be read or if they can just be included in the minutes.
Well, I had, I was hoping they would be in our packet, but since they're not in our packet, that's, that's too late. How many are there?
One, two, three, four. They're fairly lengthy.
Would the council like to hear these? What is the pleasure of the council?
I can include them in the minutes as written comments, the same that I'm doing for the comments that the public comments were received.
Are they any of the ones that, uh, that emails that we've already received today?
Um, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure if they can, let's see, no, this one, this one was about Humboldt Bay Municipal Waters. That one's different, sorry. I do not, I can't see if they were sent to you, but one is from Alicia Russo, one's from Pittman, and one is from Jonas Berg. And they came in after, they came in today. So that's why they weren't in their pockets.
Uh, what's the pleasure of the council? Would you like to hear these letters read?
I'd like to hear them read. I think they're, uh, probably written with the intent of being read into the record, so.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mandy.
All right. Uh, dear Mandy and the city council, please give the community more time to discuss and consider this Danco development project and to come up with options to consider that will address the challenges the city is facing. Jamie and I recently in 2017 bought and renovated our house in Blue Lake and have a young son, Jesper, who is four. We have lived in Blue Lake on and off since the eighties and have been coming here to swim and enjoy since the seventies. We are very committed to being here for the duration and participating in the health and prosperity of Blue Lake. So as new and committed members of the community, I ask you to please give us time as a community to understand clearly what those challenges are. It seems like this project will radically transform that area of Blue Lake and the whole of the community. I was surprised to find out about this project only yesterday despite being fairly well-connected and on Nextdoor Blue Lake almost every day. I would like to have seen a prominent sign at the proposed site since we go by there nearly every day. This rather large community-owned property seems fairly rare and should be given more time to consider. Once community land is gone, it is a monumental task to get any back. I promise you that my views are not coming from a NIMBY perspective, but rather from a desire to have a real community and county legacy project occupy that area and not something that largely, largely just satisfies a bottom line objectives. Thank you for your time and consideration. Seri Lee, um, Jonas Berg. Alicia Russo, dear city council members, I'm writing because of concerns I have from the previous city council meeting on February 23, 2021. The presentation given by the Danco group proposing a 50-unit housing project in the Powers Creek District in partnership with the Wiat tribe is my primary concern and reason for writing. Mandy Mayger disclosed her conflict of interest in this project as a member of the tribe. My request to the council is to appoint a person at the city besides Mandy who can work with the public about their concerns for this project only because of her stated conflict of interest. She was open about this and I appreciate the transparency she provided in the public meeting that requested an uninterested person take all public comments and concerns regarding this proposed project. I also request and think that it is a, in the best interest of the city that an uninterested person make the negotiations for the land lease or purchase of the property. I'm curious if the council has investigated or contacted the Wiat tribe to see if this project will benefit their members beyond housing priority, i.e. extra income that may be passed on to members. My second request is that the council consider the amount of income this project will bring to the city. The current way the city has rental owners' fees and dues calculated would mean the city receives $540 per year. I do not know if there are special monies from the state for low-income housing. If there is a commercial space with a business, that would bring in extra money, but the rental income is minimal for the land available. I understand there are requirements the city needs to meet for low-income housing units. And I believe there is a better solution than this proposed project. I would like a direct answer on how many low-income housing units are required for Blue Lake and how many we currently have. Bringing in 50 housing units will potentially increase the population of Blue Lake by 10%. That is a significant increase and I worry about the traffic and enforcement of traffic laws to support that increase. A side question regarding the ozone, is it passed? Thank you for your time and consideration. Dear city council members, I am alarmed at the city manager's request to be appointed to begin real estate negotiations with Danco for the entirety of the remaining vacant property in the Powers Creek District in order to construct an enormous multifamily housing project. This proposed project is inappropriate and will not meet our community's needs. We cannot rush to consider it because this developer has an upcoming subsidy application deadline they want to meet. I offer the following considerations. The intent of the city's business and commercial and light industrial park by whatever name it is called has always been to generate jobs and a direct ongoing revenue stream for the city. Selling the entire property or leasing at a nominal rate and converting it into housing with some incidental retail that will likely never be filled will do neither. This is not the highest and best use of the property. It does not meet the city's needs and will permanently irrevocably eliminate the opportunity to ever create those better uses in the future. The Opportunity Zone has taken years to develop with many public hearings because it is understood that allowing residential uses to occur in that area is a big change worthy of the most careful consideration. The city planner, planning commission, city staff, council and community members have invested much time in coming to the decision to allow some residential uses to occur there. As the proposed ordinance raises, the Opportunity Zone is, is intended to allow for the compatible and beneficial mixture of commercial manufacturing and residential uses. This zone is primarily intended for commercial and manufacturing uses with residential dwellings as a secondary use to promote a live-work type environment. The proposed project completely disregards the spirit and letter of the Opportunity Zone, turning it upside down and making the primary use housing with commercial becoming a minor secondary use and manufacturing essentially eliminated altogether. Further, actually, there is no Opportunity Zone in Blue Lake today. The ordinance has yet to be adopted. To negotiate a deal with a developer now predicated on the expectation of an ordinance passing in the future leaves the city in a precarious and weakened position. It would give the developer tremendous power to press for accommodations in the ordinance since they, since they relied on that in negotiations. This property is owned by the public and the city has a formal fiduciary responsibility to undertake the most careful and extensive due diligence to protect the public's interest. To precipitously cede control to any private developer now without adequate time for this due diligence process could be considered negligent or worse. Further committing the entirety of the city's remaining property to one single developer and one single monolithic project is contrary to good fiduciary management. It's like investing one's entire savings in one company's stock rather than diversifying your financial portfolio. The project as proposed would have profound and drastic impacts on Blue Lake, increasing in one stroke the entire existing housing stock and population by nearly 10% in any concentrated single location with a single target income population. We all support the need to develop affordable housing, but building it is not enough. We need to support the occupants after they move in too. Blue Lake is a bedroom community with virtually no services. We have no jobs, no grocery store, no healthcare, extremely limited and mostly ineffective police and public transportation. And with due respect, we know that there are common social problems associated with projects of this nature. The proposed project is not in scale with our community's capacities and not work out well for either the occupants or the community. Because a project of this nature will have inevitable impacts on our whole community, there needs to be a much greater outreach effort to inform and engage more of the public. People need to know that the city is proposing to allow a private developer to build a very large subsidized low-rent housing project on its last and best commercial property. In addition, this project appears to trigger Article 34 of the state constitution which states, "No low-rent housing project shall hereafter be developed, constructed or acquired in any manner by any state public body until a majority of the qualified electors of the city, town or county, as the case may be, in which it is proposed to develop, construct or acquire the same, voting upon such issue, approve such project by voting in favor thereof at an election to be held for that purpose or at any general or special election." Danco's urgency to meet a quickly approaching funding subsidy application deadline is no relevance to the city. Urgency on their part does not create any emergency on our part. Good governance takes time and trying to short-circuit that process because the developer is in a hurry is not good governance. If this project is viable now, it will still be viable for the next subsidy funding cycle in a year. And if there's any doubt about its viability in a year, doesn't that call into question whether it is a good idea now? Danco's goals are not aligned with the city's goals. Their purpose is to make money and they have developed a business model that allows them to make a profit when developing projects like this and then selling them. If they need to construct large dense projects to hit their profit and then selling them. If they need to construct large dense projects to hit their profit targets, then that is what they will demand regardless of how it may affect our city. They have no investment in what happens to the project or the community after they've sold it. Further, we must stop thinking of this as a Danco project. They are only the builders. For the next several decades, we will be dealing with the unknown entity that Danco sells the project to. That entity is going to be another private company intent on being profitable almost certainly from outside the area. We all know the problems attendant to absentee ownership. With tremendous appreciation and respect for the city manager in this matter, she has already acted as an ardent promoter for Danco's proposed project. As such, she cannot be considered an arms-length negotiator and the presence of legal counsel advising on mechanics does not fill that role. There must be checks and balances. There must be other individuals with authority that do not share the city manager's unreserved and a pipe. And they, I'm not sure what he's saying there, support for the proposal included in any negotiation. And the council and public deserve to be getting information from more neutral and balanced sources than just the Danco sales team or the supportive city manager. The council and public deserve a clear pro forma projection of the expected revenues that this or any project would generate for the city. The vague generalities presented so far at best are inadequate and at worst obfuscation, or obfuscation. The Danco representative indicated that there will be very little direct income to the city, suggesting that in another project, the involved city leased their land for a dollar a year. On the other hand, if this public asset is liquidated, sold, the money will be spent and gone, after which we will be, we will be right back where we started with no revenue stream. We could add many more concerns, but the main point is that it is totally inappropriate to begin negotiations with this developer for this project at this time. There is much, much more work to be done before we get to that stage. In the meantime, it would be good faith business practice to inform Danco that the city does not intend to try to meet their current subsidy application deadlines so that they do not expend resources rushing to achieve an unrealistic goal. Please direct staff to do them that courtesy at this council meeting. Sincerely, Kit Man and Rebecca Zeller. The other letter was from Linda and she kind of presented that, the Humboldt Bay.
Okay, thank you, Mandy, for reading those letters. Um, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had discussion from council. We've had discussions from, uh, public. It is getting late and we do have other items which we may have to postpone for our next meeting or or have a special meeting to finish those up if it's necessary. Um, what is the pleasure of the council?
Can we have an additional discussion before we vote, please?
Sure.
So I wanted to come back to the process and the timeline and how we've gotten to this point again. And, um, just a reminder that Mandy, as the city manager, is acting at the direction of a five council, elected city council. And we directed her a couple of years ago to look out into the community, to search out ideas, to search out partners, and to bring back proposals and ideas to present to the council and to the public for review and for consideration. So she's done exactly that. And then comments about her and, um, her conflict of entrance, interest or appearance of it. We had that discussion today and she has decided to recuse herself, which is admirable. And even though legally there is no conflict of interest. So I think, I just want to, uh, ask Russ also, our attorney, how different is this process tonight from the one that we did a year or so ago focused around Pacific Builders?
Uh, yes, the Pacific Builders transaction was slightly different in that there, there was actually uh, an affirmative commitment to negotiate exclusively with Pacific Builders is what they negotiated. In essence, uh, they wanted a commitment, uh, to the city that the city would actively purchase or, uh, negotiate uh, and work with Pacific Builders as it evaluated the property for, uh, potential development purposes. It's very expensive to do that, uh, to make an assessment of, uh, commercial real property. Any form of real property in the state of California for development purposes of, uh, any substantial in evaluating whether to proceed with a negotiation, potential purchase. Again, what's agendized tonight is the specific language that's required by the Open Meetings Law in California, the Brown Act, in terms of forming a negotiating committee at the outset of a potential negotiation regarding the purchase of real property. So again, the council is not committing, uh, the city of, uh, uh, Blue Lake to any course of contact, uh, conduct, contract, or, uh, development proposal with respect to the real property. Again, what's agendized tonight is whether or not to form a negotiating committee to obtain additional information from this interested party and ultimately return to the council. Only the full council, uh, can actually enter a binding commitment or contract, uh, for the city. Uh, obviously, we've had a lot of comments tonight, uh, as to more what I would say are policy-related issues and land use planning related issues for this real property. And so your council has a lot of discretion on how it wants to proceed. And if it wants to encourage, you know, additional public participation at the outset, uh, you can also do that concurrently. For example, the public workshops that a number of members of the council have discussed regarding, um, a, uh, potential project, uh, community-wide impacts, and maybe what's the best use for that real property that might ultimately inform how the council wants to proceed with respect to any proposed, uh, purchase contract if one ever comes to fruition uh, from this, uh, potentially interested party, a Danco Builders Group. So again, we're at the outset of the, the protocol or process. And if you may recall from the previous Pacific Builders, contemplated transaction that never came to fruition. There was never a purchase agreement and there was never any binding commitment offered uh, by the interested party in that circumstance. So again, uh, this is simply, uh, an agendized item in a Brown Act compliant matter, manner to appoint a negotiating committee. Again, if your council wants to concurrently contemplate, uh, the community development impact of a potential proposed project as that develops, the council can also concurrently uh, agendize public meetings or workshops on that subject as well. So hopefully that answered your question. I can answer any follow-up questions.
It did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Russell. Um, we still have a motion on the floor made by Summer Doherty, I think seconded by Elaine Hogan.
To, uh, Sorry, I have to interrupt again.
Okay.
One more. And so this, one of the things that I really value about our meetings, when people participate and show up and speak, it's so nice because then we're not planning in a bubble, right? And I wish that all of the council meetings over the last, my current term and last term, that we have this much participation and every single one of them. So I appreciate everything that everybody has contributed tonight, um, the solutions, the concerns, the, um, everything that you've said. And I'm, what I'm hearing too is, um, a lot of fear about what this implies tonight and moving forward and that uh, even though there's been a process that's been in place and occurring for several years in kind of progression of moving forward with a form of development, that there's still a lot of fear and concern and those that maybe aren't, um, that haven't been engaged and would like to further engage. And how can we do that? So, uh, if there's like workshops or, um, community meetings, but in a Zoom fashion right now, or maybe in the park, right, or outdoor on a sunny day, where we could have a better discussion focused around the vision for the, uh, the district, I think that's a great step to move forward with as well. I'm not so concerned about moving forward with this motion. I do want to make sure that it also includes the knowledge that we're going to establish some workshops or further listening sessions or I don't know, it, what would you call it? Like a brainstorming session similar to what we had done a couple of years ago. So it's time to do that again.
Well said. Thank you, Summer. Um, yeah, I agree that there's a lot of, um, concern and maybe fear and it's a, it's having to do with change as one of the comments was made and I've written down quite a few of them. I, um, appreciate all of the people zooming in and this isn't the best way, but it is our way right now. We do have a motion on the floor. Did the motioner want to, um, rescind her motion?
No, I think that this is a process that can be done concurrently because it, as Russ was saying, this isn't, we're not committing the city to anything by doing this. We're simply saying we're willing to hear proposals and we're willing to hear it from Danco as we had previously done with Pacific Builders, uh, but that doesn't commit us to doing anything other than listening.
Okay. All right. So there is a motion on the floor and a second.
I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, Mayor. Great to apologize, but, uh, perhaps the motion maker, uh, may want to inter-motion to go ahead and direct staff to, uh, schedule those public workshops via Zoom or otherwise, uh, early on, uh, as this negotiation progresses. If the council ultimately has a change of heart on the proposed project or that informs the council on how it may want to proceed and give direction in negotiating team, be worthwhile to know that sooner rather than later. So the motion maker might want to include that, uh, very, um, good, uh, thought or suggestion in her motion. I think that would, uh, help give staff direction.
Thanks, Russ. I'd be happy to do that. So, uh, Mandy ended, in addition to appointing the negotiators, pass that, um, staff work with council and the public to set up workshops for listening sessions or, um, kind of like planning, envisioning session workshop relatively soon so that we can help formulate the direction of any, uh, development or proposals, right, to help direct people who are proposing ideas to us.
There's been an amended motion, um, uh, made and now, uh, made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Elaine Hogan. Is there any further discussion from council? And, um, anything from the audience?
Yes.
Lori?
Um, so I just have a question. What's the difference between the prior negotiations with Pacific Builders and what might happen with Danco?
I think that's yet to be determined because the prior negotiations were, did not come to any sort of, uh, product. And the term of the agreement, the agreement that we had with them for negotiating expired and, uh, no actual proposals came forth. And we didn't move forward with anything. So,
So why did that end with Pacific Builders?
I can't speak for them and why, um,
So they ended it, but not the city?
Yeah, they ended it. It, it ended because it, um, expired. So they didn't ask for a renewal.
And so then Danco was, was sought out to be the next?
We had directed the city manager,
Had a Danco in the picture.
Right. So the city manager has been directed to essentially like put the feelers out there into the community as she had done previously and just continue to seek out proposals, seek out potential businesses that might be interested in developing in the, in the city limits. And, uh, Danco came forth.
And they were the only ones?
That I'm aware of, yes. Mandy, you can speak to that.
Yeah. So, um, originally we were working with Pacific Builders and, you know, this is a very big project that's being proposed. It's multi-millions of dollars. Um, and they're just really, the, the financial, I think, capacity to pull off um, this type of project, um, just wasn't there at the time. And then honestly, COVID hit, um, and that took out a lot of people's capacity for development. Um, and basically the project kind of just fizzled out. Um, we still have good relations with Pacific Builders and I'm hopeful that in the future, they might be interested in, um, developing a some of the other available land in the city. Um, this project is looking at, I think, um, possibly two acres out of the six, um, that's available. So there's, there's definitely opportunities for other people to come in and propose projects. Danco was pursuing a project on the Calgon Carbon site, um, but wasn't able to, um, make that final transaction. And then they came to the city and asked if we had any available property that, um, could basically meet the needs of a mixed-use development. And we had, you know, we have this property in the Powers Creek District with the new ozone, um, that's being proposed for it. So, um, that's how those conversations got started.
So Dan, Danco sought out the city versus the city seeking out Danco?
Yeah, originally when the Calgon Carbon site was being, um, sold, we were assisting the broker in advertising the project and reaching out to uh, various interested parties about that project site because we'd also like to overlay the Opportunity Zone onto that parcel. Um, and it was one that, uh, Danco had shown interest in, um, I think two years ago had tried to buy that parcel um, and wasn't able to complete the transaction at the time. Um, and then they had some renewed interest in it, um, several months ago. So it's been kind of an ongoing process, you know, no one's, I always tell people like as much as we love our community, no one's really beating down our doors to, um, to make these types of investments.
Except Danco.
Were very viable and the Opportunity Zone brings a whole new level of opportunity to the community. But, you know, at the end of the day, it's got to be financially feasible and, um, it's real expensive to construct in California.
Well, true, but I mean, I think that there's been, there was an interesting, uh, Facebook, uh, dialogue. And, and you're a heavy participant. So it was kind of funny because I didn't really read it until today. Um, and there seems to be, and I think, you know, there are a lot of people that have, um, concerns about Danco projects. So I think that that should be something that the city, uh, council really takes, um, to, um, consideration. And they're, you know, Danco is involved in many things. They've done a lot and I appreciate the yawn because I know it's late. But, um, I, yeah, but I think that, um, there are a lot of people who, um, have some really strong concerns. And I have to say that I'm one of them, um, because of the quality of work that Danco has done in many, um, mixed use and, um, some of the high development, low-income development, the quality of their projects. So I would like the, the city council to, um, really consider all of those aspects. And, um, and I was just curious about the Pacific Builders-Danco difference. And so, you know, that's kind of what I wanted to say. I just, I just feel like, uh, baby steps are probably the way to go with this and, um, and I'm, I'm just glad to see this, uh, in a, a venue that more people can participate. Um, and I know it's time-consuming, but we've all been on board, so we know how that goes. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
All right.
Your James?
Yes, sir.
We've had a wonderful dialogue and I appreciate each of you and your time as council members. But I want to say even with the amended motion, the specific legal authorities cited in Government Code Section 54956.8 that was listed in the agenda item are not necessary to have the kind of exploration and moving this project idea forward. And I really think that the potential for closed-session negotiations as part of those legal authorities And I really think that the potential for closed session negotiations as part of those legal authorities would send the wrong message, not the message you've said you want to send to the community by doing this planning concurrently with actually having ongoing negotiations. I think having a plan with some specific nature would be a vastly improved approach. So I urge each of you to vote no in this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call vote, please, Amanda.
Yes, Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Obada?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
Thank you. That's five yeses. That's unanimous and the motion passes. All right, let's take a look at the agenda. I noticed item six, SB 1383 was supposed to be a presentation discussion is, is there a possibility of postponing that to our next meeting?
I would highly recommend it so we can look at it with fresh eyes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's an ongoing issue that would be the same issue in April as it is in March.
Right. Was there someone here? Was there someone here for it though? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. That concerned me. Okay, item seven then is our consent agenda. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I believe it was requested to pull the February 23rd, 2021 minutes.
Okay, then we need a motion for item seven, A, B, one, and C.
Well, was there any, anybody else that wanted to pull anything or?
Yeah. Was there anyone that wanted to pull any other items? Otherwise, that's the motion that we need.
All right. I am motion to approve item seven, A, B, one, and C. And pull B two.
I'll second.
Motion made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Chris Curran to approve consent agenda items A, B, one, and C, and pull B two. Is there any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Roll call vote, Mandy.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yeah.
Councilmember Obada?
Yes. Motion passed. Okay, item seven, B two, there was some discussion about the minutes of the February 23rd meeting.
I believe Scott had questions about that.
Yes, thank you. So in, in an effort to be well informed for tonight's meeting, I tried to find the reference materials that were available. And as Elise had commented earlier, some were possibly available, but some were not as clear or complete as a person might want to have to feel they were fully informed if they weren't in attendance at your last council meeting. So I would like to suggest that the discussion of item six, We Are Tribe and Danco Group Presentation and Proposal could be elaborated upon by those who were there and present for the discussion. Specifically, the minutes reflect that representatives from Danco Group, Chris Dart, Haley de Grande, and Rob Flint presented a development proposal, end quote. It was on to say in collaboration with the We Are Tribe, but what that proposal was is unclear and the minutes don't reflect the number that many people in the community have picked up of a 50 unit development. There's some important aspects of this about the financial impact that were expressed in questions by people in attendance as well as the important traffic and safety questions. But I think any additional detail that you could provide on this element would be helpful for those who are looking for that background.
You know that minutes only have to reflect motions and seconds, but I appreciate your request on that.
Thank you, because not recording the meeting on the 23rd makes the minutes all we have to go on.
It was recorded.
I would also state that there weren't, those details were not available because they weren't proposed. So this was proposed just in concept without those details because those details haven't been developed.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd like to clarify at the point of order. I asked today if there was a recorded Zoom record of that meeting and I was led to believe there was not one available to the public. So is that going to be made available?
I have to go back and check and see if it's recorded, how it's extrapolated from Zoom.
Thank you. So yeah, if you want, I'll submit a written request, but I hope this is all that's necessary.
Okay, we need a motion.
Wait, can someone clarify, aren't there two different types of minutes that can be taken? One are just actions only and one type of minute is a little bit more descriptive. Is there a way we can change to a form of minutes that are more informative for the public, especially if we're not going to be posting the actual recording of the meeting?
So at this, in the past, the council had chosen to do action minutes only just because of our internal capacity. We don't have someone who is trained to record minutes verbatim. We need like a court transcripts type person who, we don't have that capacity. So we were in the past, we had videotaped the meetings and now we're on Zoom and trying to accommodate through the cloud recording, but you're only required to take the action minutes. We do try and put as much detail as possible to ensure that anything that's important is available. But like I said, with, with that situation, the details aren't there because there were no details presented. It was just a very basic rough concept and introduction of who they were and there weren't development details presented. But if we can, if I can get this recording to work properly the way it's supposed to, those can be made available.
Thank you, Mandy. And I noticed it was April Sissa that did the minutes for our meeting that evening. So if we don't have a a recording of the meeting, then we would have to get the minutes from her notes or to get more expanded minutes, I suppose, from her notes.
There were quite a few details presented on the PowerPoint that Danco presented and I, and I took minutes and notes and I put those on Facebook. There were, there were numbers and all kinds of things he talked about. So I think that the meeting was recorded and it is put on, I think, community access like Elaine was talking about. It would be helpful to the public, but I'm confused about not offering details. Is that how you recall that meeting?
My recollection was that the minutes reflect what occurred that evening. The level of detail on minutes is often not required. So we have not, we have not mandated that they be that, that detailed.
I think there's also, I think there's also like a disconnect in the understanding of what that presentation was at the last council meeting. And maybe this is just my own perception of what that was. It was simply a presentation to have a better idea of who Danco was, examples of other projects and conceptual ideas. There's, and so for me, that's all it was. And that means I don't have anything on paper that says this is what they want to do. There are no design plans in place or presented for discussion. That was simply an informational presentation to get to know them and kind of what their thoughts are. I'm not, and maybe I'm the only one that feels that way. So I don't know what else you would expect then if it was simply an informational item. There were no actions taken. There was discussion from the public, comments.
Actually, what I heard, what I heard him say, he gave a timeline as what Danco would provide in terms of detail for the project. He was going to be proposing or presenting sketches.
Exactly, that he's going to be proposing. So again, this was an initial presentation for the very first time to the council as well. This was our initial introduction to them.
Okay, there were a lot of details, but I guess they weren't significant. Thank you.
They're not because we don't have an actual proposal in front of us. So I'm not going to anchor my opinion of them on 50 low income housing units because that's not actually what's on paper and it's not been presented as a design plan or vetted through the community or presented to the council. It has to follow those legal pathways.
Okay, we, we have the February 23rd, 2021 minutes. We can postpone those and ask for more detail if that is the pleasure of the council. We can look at the recording if we have it on Zoom and we could also get the notes from April and we can postpone those minutes until we get a lot more level of detail. If that's the pleasure of the council. That's one thought.
I would recommend.
I think the worry is that the minutes were taken conform with what we had decided, how we always take the minutes. And, and that's just the way we always take the minutes. But I, I do recognize that the public is asking for recorded meetings so that they can view them. And many other jurisdictions use Access Humbled and broadcast live and then archive their meetings so that the public has access to them. So I recognize that there's kind of two different things. I don't think we need to change the way we do the minutes and certainly not go back and try to do anything different for the minutes that were taken in February. However, moving forward, I'm seeing a clear desire from the public to have access to the recordings. And so I can bring that up as a future agenda item if it doesn't fit under this, but I think that may be a way to move forward.
Thank you, Elaine. That's, that's a good plan. Okay, do we want to then have a motion to accept the February 23rd, 2021 minutes as delivered?
Looks like raised hand from Elise.
Oh, sorry, Elise. Yes. Elise, did you have a comment on the minutes?
I did. Thank you, Elaine, for proposing that we have more access to information. I just did want to comment, it seems like from my point of view, from what I'm hearing people, but it's also colored by my own perception. More information is better. You know, I think, I think a huge proportion of the backlash that you guys are getting tonight is is because of the absence of information. You know, if, if I could have spent the time I spent yesterday looking and finding the information I was looking for and getting explanation rather than finding nothing and getting more and more frustrated, I would have had a different spin on things today at the beginning of the meeting. So it's, it's also frustrating. I can see for a number of people that, you know, we've urged you not to go forward with this and, and you're still going forward with it. And I understand that our perception and your perception are two completely different things. But I think it's important that the council understand that what people are seeing and feeling from outside of the council are, is very, very different than what you guys are experiencing. So I really hope that you guys take that to heart and, and really make this a very open process. And I, I also would like to suggest that since the, since the power plant lease is going to expire in four years, maybe it would be wise to wait until that happens so that that parcel can be included in any big plans going forward. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, four years isn't that long. And if that parcel, which is many times the size of the parcel we're talking about, were to become available and become part of a great, a greater plan, that might make a lot of good sense for, for a much better, for a much better outcome for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Elise. Thank you for your comments. What is the pleasure of the councils? Should we?
Well, since we're focused on the minutes right now for February 2021, I'd like to move that we approve them as is and take Elaine Hogan's recommendation to look into or make the meetings stay with the current recording and make the recorded meetings public.
I will second that.
Great. And before we move forward, I'd like to add that information about all of our meetings are added or included on the website. The city manager has always said that she's available for questions. I received emails late in the, in the day which gave me no really opportunity to have a conversation with you or even contact you. So I, I would encourage you to like email ahead of time. Let's have these conversations ahead of time. Like Elise said, if you had that information beforehand, you would have stepped into this meeting a little bit differently. So I'm available as well. Please email so we can get in touch, go for a walk and have a conversation. Reach out to your city manager and she can answer a lot of these questions beforehand as well. I definitely want to make sure that information is available. There are many avenues. And please take advantage of them.
Thank you. I totally agree. Our emails are, that are out there for people to do. I got several emails today. I responded to them. There were some good questions. They were brought up tonight, even some of the same people. So all right, there's been a motion made by Summer Doherty, seconded by Elaine Hogan? No, seconded by Chris Curran. I'm sorry, Chris. Okay, to accept the minutes of the February 23rd, 2021 meeting and to contact Humbled Access to see about getting our minutes recorded for the future? Is there any further discussion from council?
Adeline, I just, can I just add one thing before we vote? Just kind of of really agreeing that, well, I just want to share that I'm really excited that so many people are really wanting to participate and wanting information and access to the meetings. And like I said earlier, I'm eager to be involved in the council in ways and I didn't take that participating in the negotiation team as a, as a way of, you know, making decisions exclusively. So I'm really interested in doing workshops that, you know, with the public that were suggested. And I just want to, to put that out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Well said. Okay, is there any further discussion on the motion from council? Any from audience? Okay, back to council. Amanda, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doherty?
Yes.
Councilmember Curran?
Yes.
Councilmember Hogan?
Yes.
Councilmember Obada?
Yes. Motion passes. We are on item eight, council correspondence. I think the correspondence was pretty much what you had read. Is that correct, Mandy? Yeah. Okay. Item nine is reports of council and staff. If we could go through this rather quickly, I would appreciate it. Elaine Hogan, did you go to any meetings?
Yeah, just HWMA where we are recruiting for a new executive director. Mandy's been involved in that process. Thank you very much, Mandy. We've held interviews and are moving forward with interviews. And SB 1383, which is on our agenda tonight, which we'll need to postpone. So those are the two big ticket items and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Summer, did you go to any meetings?
We had the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission meeting last night and actually a really good presentation about the progress that the Nordic Aqua Farms is taking out on the Samoa Peninsula and looking at cleaning up an old mill site. And that was an interesting presentation. But other than that, that was it. I just want to add, oh, I'm sorry, the Chamber of Commerce met. However, I was presenting at another city council meeting that night, so I couldn't attend. And I would suggest maybe we have a meeting at the second Tuesday if possible, but in the future, we, if we make sure not to rush staff's presentation or update so that she can talk about what's going on. I know we are short on time tonight, but just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And I apologize, but I do like to hear everybody's input when an agenda item comes up. It's so important to people. Um, okay, I attended an HCOG meeting and happy to report that. Okay, I attended an HCOG meeting and happy to report that the city of Blue Lake will be getting $41,656 of local transportation fund apportionment for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. And then we had our usual report on the 101 corridor. And the last chance grade, the environmental process is on budget. They're narrowing down a list of alternatives. They still don't have the alternative that they're going to choose. They're having meetings up in Del Norte, quite a bit about that. Caltrans report on the complete streets and then the 101 safety corridor supplement patrols, which is the Eureka PD. And then I also attended the Traffic Safety Task Force. This is a group that gets together, that's going to have about four or five meetings, spearheaded by Mayor Seaman of Eureka, talking mostly about safety along 101 as it goes through Eureka. Apparently, our statistics in Eureka are very high for pedestrian deaths and accidents. And the main focus of this task force is going to be education. That's really the main focus is how do we educate people? And our next meeting is going to be on April 14th. Okay, Chris Curran, did you go to any meetings?
Yeah, for Blue Lake Fire, there's an update on the 5th and K building. Once they finish landscaping, they'll be completely done, signed off on the building. Actually, they were looking for landscapers and Mandy, I suggested they reach out to you about the plaza landscaper.
Yeah, I've given Chief Anu Gueye Aaron's contact.
Great. And Dan Flores was named firefighter of the year. So yeah, pause to him.
Are they going to have a grand opening for their new building? Any kind of a production?
Not that I.
Ribbon cutting? I don't know, something. Okay. Thanks.
And economic development did not meet this month.
Okay, Olivia, did you attend any meetings as a city representative?
Nope, not, not this month.
Okay, thank you. Staff report includes the financial statements and reports. We've all had a copy of that to look at. Not surprisingly, our park and rec, of course, is taking the biggest hit with COVID. Other than that, the outlook isn't bad.
Not bad. And our revenue, we just got our tax allocation and we just received a Caltrans reimbursement. So our cash balance should increase by about $200,000 this, on the next financials.
And then we'll be getting some of the American Rescue Plan money too as well, so that will, will help us anyway. Okay, very good. Any other reports from staff?
I don't really have much to report this time.
Okay. Any questions of council of staff? No. All right, future agenda items. We have the manager evaluation that we really need to do. I think we need to generate some of the paperwork that goes along with that. I'd like to have input from staff as well. Staff members that work with the manager to have copies made to them that they can fill out about performance and that kind of thing. And then we'll establish a committee of two council persons to go over and and tabulate all of the evaluations of the manager. That should happen. The noise ordinance, I would like to see that come to some kind of conclusion.
Those will be on the next agenda. So Ryan just wasn't able to pull those together in time in ordinance form. There's been, we've had a lot of projects going back and forth, so there's been quite a bit of work this month.
Okay, thank you.
They're really close to being ready.
Okay, those are the items I have. What did others have? Councilpersons?
We'll have SB 1383 on the next.
Oh, right. Yeah, the one that we postponed. Yeah, we'll have the SB 1383 discussion. Okay.
And I think just from the last time we've talked to, we wanted to, we're hoping that the Parks and Rec Commission can start working on that, like the park use designation or guidelines. This was something we had asked for to start prior to COVID and after last summer's festivals in the park that came about. So engaging the community, engaging neighbors and discussing kind of how the park use looks moving forward. And then any, what the, the park schedule for the summer would be like, as well as any future ideas for our own schedules as far as meeting in person or outside settings, larger group settings outside. Yeah.
You mean have council meetings outside? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, so this is something that other groups are talking about and just looking ahead and thinking about how, how does it look moving forward? Is it feasible to have meetings in an outdoor setting? Do we want to stick solely with Zoom? And how, just to make sure that it is also available to multiple people. Because we've had, we have had this discussion about making meetings available. Some people aren't so interested in Zoom or have the capability or a computer would prefer things by paper versus electronically. So there's just making sure that we're making meetings available when we have them.
Well, I've been vaccinated twice. And Friday, it will have been two weeks since my last second vaccination. So as more people are getting vaccinated, I know you guys are young, so you're going to be probably the last ones on the totem pole. But, you know, I'm feeling a little more comfortable about, I'm still going to wear masks and I still do out of respect for others. But, you know, I'm starting to feel a little more comfortable. And hopefully, if things go along as they are, we could have outdoor meetings. Unfortunately, you know, it still gets dark at nine o'clock, so we might have to look at the timing of meetings and the day perhaps. I don't know. But anyways. Yeah, Lori.
This is Lori. Did you guys discuss consent agendas? The Humboldt County Sheriff contract extension, or did you postpone that for the next meeting?
No, we, we approved that.
Okay, so that's on the last, that's on the last meeting agenda?
No, we, no, it was on this agenda. We approved it with the consent agenda tonight.
Okay. Okay, I guess I missed that. So just wanted to check.
Okay. Are there any other future agenda items? All right, we need a motion.
With the one that Summer just talked about, I think, yeah, just needing accessibility in general moving forward. Because I want to be able to have an open discussion about like a hybrid model, because I think for a lot of people, Zoom meetings are more accessible. And, you know, I don't know how many people would still be hanging out with us at 10 o'clock at night and we have 19 people in the room. So I do want us to be able to have a, like, however the agenda item is formulated so that we can have an open discussion about accessibility to meetings and some kind of a virtual in-person hybrid moving forward out of COVID. Because I think in a lot of ways, it's been more accessible to some people and obviously less for others. So we want to figure out a kind of happy medium that works for everyone. So if the wording of the agenda item could enable us to have that discussion, that'd be great.
Well said. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's true, that sometimes we've had more people at meetings since we've had Zoom. I think people like to be at home in their pajamas. I don't know. Okay. Yeah. We can discuss that. Yeah, a community visioning meeting or we can discuss that, a date for that. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I motion adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for sticking it out and being here tonight. Really appreciate your input.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Summer Doherty, seconded by Olivia Obada to adjourn. Is any further discussion? Council? Audience, thank you all. We love Blue Lake. Motion to adjourn is passed. We are adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Good night.